I now call back to order the Pasco County Board of County Commission meeting on November 12th, 2024. Please silence all electronic devices and mute your microphones. We will proceed with public hearings, starting with ordinances, items P 57 through P 64.
I approve a publication, P 57 Tampa Bay Times, October 27th, 2024, and by affidavit of certified mailings and site postings.
Okay. All right. We're ready for P 57.
Okay. Patrick Dutter, Planning Development and Economic Growth. Item P 57 is PDE 250024, a comprehensive plan amendment in the name of Fletcher. The memorandum states a continuance to December 10th, 2024. However, staff is requesting a continuance to the January 28th, 2025 Board of County Commissioners meeting at 1:30 PM in Newport Ritchie.
Move to continue time, Senator.
Second.
Got a motion and second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passed 5-0. P 58.
Prep a publication, P 58 Tampa Bay Times, July the 28th, 2024, and September the 18th, 2024.
Item P 58 is PDE 250020, is a land development code amendment to increase the Northeast Pasco County Rural Protection Overlay. A continuance of the adoption hearing is being requested to the December 10th, 2024 Board of County Commissioners meeting at 1:30 PM in Newport Ritchie. This item was affected by the cancellation of the 10-8-24 BCC meeting. To further note, P 62 on this agenda is the first reading of this item.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
So, this is a Northeast Pasco rural, and you want to have it in Newport Ritchie? Should we have it? Should have it over here?
I think it's just updating the land development code to match a comprehensive plan amendment that's happening. I think, is the plan amendment happening, I think, in Dade City? The first reading of the plan amendment is here in Dade City, right now. It's going to be happening later. So, the land development code just needs to be modified to match what's happening in that comprehensive plan amendment.
Move to continue time, Senator.
Second.
Got a motion and second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passed 5-0. P 59.
Prep a publication Tampa Bay Times, September 4th, 2024. The item was moved from the October 8th, 2024 BCC meeting to the October 22nd, 2024 BCC meeting due to Hurricane Milton. It was then continued to today. I do have a speaker on this item.
Okay.
There it is all. Okay.
All right. Item P 59, one's a mouthful, is PDE 250003, an ordinance by the Pasco County Board of County Commissioners amending the Pasco County Land Development Code, Section 204.1. A, Planning Commission, Section 304.2. D, Public Notice, Section 305.2. B, Neighborhood Meeting Coordination and Notice, Section 307, Continuance Procedures, Section 310, Performance Security, Section 311, Defects Security, Section 403.5, Construction Plans, Section 406.1.6. B.1, and 3, Temporary Signs, Section 406.1.9. A, Additional Standards for Permanent Signs in Residential Districts, Section 406.1.10. B, C, and E, Additional Standards for Signs in Nonresidential Districts, Ground Signs, Wall Signs, and Regulations for Marquee, Canopy, and Honning Signs, Section 1003.1, Gates, Fences, and Walls, General Acquisitions, Section 1003.4, Gates, Fences, and Walls, Nonresidential Acquisitions, Section 1203.4, Nonconforming Signs, Section 1302.1. D, Uniform Procedures and Provisions, Production of Mobility Fees and Waivers of School Impact Fees, Appendix A Definitions, and Other Sections as Necessary for Internal Consistency, Providing for applicability or repealer, Providing for separability, Inclusion into the Land Development Code, and an Effective Date. This comes with a recommendation to accept public comment and adopt the proposed ordinance by roll call vote.
All right. We have someone sign up for this item?
We do. McCary King.
Welcome. Name and address for the record.
Good afternoon. My name is McCary King with the law firm of Icard Merrill. Our address is 2033 Main Street, Suite 600, Sarasota, Florida, 34237. I'm here today on behalf of my clients, Benderson 851 Trust and 95 F L R P T LLC, who are the owners of Bridge Plaza. We want to thank you for the amendments in front of you today and urge you to vote approval of specifically LDC Amendment 1203.4 related to nonconforming signs. We want to thank staff for their hard work on this and again urge you to vote approval. Thank you.
Is there anyone else to speak that's?
No one else has signed up.
No one else signed. Does anyone in the audience wish to speak this item? See no one?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I'd like to make one change under Section 406161. It's about the temporary signs on display. And it's asked, it talks about right now as far as the timing goes, but it doesn't really address as far as, and I think we're trying to put in political signs here. But as far as a time for political signs, I think it should be like from day of qualification to five days after. And I think five days after probably could be 10.
Mine aren't getting picked up.
Stop.
It just, it just, you know, the week, it just takes time.
I'm trying to get down to where the commissioner is referencing. 4061, what was the reference?
1-6, and then 1.
So, what part are you trying to change?
So, in the myths where it's lined out, it talked about temporary political campaign signs. They posted no more than 15 days prior to the date of the candidate qualification. May just make a candidate qualification. It must be real later than five days. I think you could put that line back in there, but just make it from the date of qualification and then I would say even like 10 days after election.
Unfortunately, I pulled up the non-structural version.
It was, and then they crossed it out so you don't see it, but I might want to make sure. It works with that because the way it's worded right here, it doesn't deal with what we got going on. I think we need to spread it out.
Oh, maybe prior to an election. Okay.
I don't know why we wouldn't. Why would you put out signs if you haven't qualified? So, it says 15 days prior to qualification.
No, it should be after.
After qualification.
Or at qualification.
Or at, yeah. I play a day of qualification, but whatever verbiage.
What does it mean for of said signs? Why isn't all of said signs shall be removed? Why or off of there?
So, you can leave one?
One political sign?
That could be a different sign on someone's property.
Well, okay.
Because you're not dealing with political signs.
Okay, yeah.
You're dealing with all temporary signs, so you can, you can have one temporary sign in a non-election cycle.
Okay. I understand that, that working out. But no one's enforcing this sadly. I hope one day, and maybe now we have someone in code who will help educate our code people that you can't have five flapping signs on your property. You only can have one.
I just want to let the board know that Ms. Hernandez is here. She's our lead of our ordinance development team and could answer any questions pertaining to this order. If there's any.
Well, I agree with Jack that we take out, that becomes upon qualification.
Maybe if Denise comes up and explains that to us. She has a good understanding of this ordinance, I believe.
Denise Hernandez, Code Compliance Department. So, what you're reading now, Commissioner Mariano, the stricken area, that is what our, our item currently says, our code currently states. So, that basically contemplated just having one sign. Obviously, that doesn't make any sense with, you know, there are several candidates, there's parcels that are larger parcels, et cetera. So, the way it reads now, what we are proposing is to have a temporary sign, each residential, nonresidential, vacant lot, to have up to a total of five temporary signs that are displayed on these lots, you know, immediately prior to an election. And then four of those signs have to go because you're only allowed, as Commissioner Starkey was stating, and our county attorney was also stating, that you're only allowed one temporary sign per establishment. So, there's going to be a period of time during the election where you will see a multitude of signs because remember, we cannot, we have to treat all signs the same way. We can't specifically state that these are the way we treat election signs, these are the way we treat other types of signs because of the Supreme Court decision that came down in 2015. So, if you want to state the time prior, prior to, or, you know, at the time of qualification, we can, we can state that, I suppose.
Yeah, I would prefer, if you want to play with a larger timeframe in front of the election, 60 days, 90 days, whatever, that would be a better way to address it than to put the language back in about qualification.
Okay.
Because this is, we are really trying to walk the line with Reed and not have a content-based code provision, but we are creating an amnesty period in front of an election for other temporary signs, whatever they may say.
So, what verbiage do you want to put in?
So, so if, if you think 30 days is too small a period of time, I would go to 60 or 90. You can, you can.
Probably 90.
But understand that it may not just be political signs that show up during that amnesty period. It may be banner signs, advertising, whatever, because we can't look at the content.
So, we can't just limit one or the other, just have to, all of them fit in the same category?
Right. All temporary signs are treated the same. However, however long you want to allow that is the board's call.
Well, you've got a primary.
You got a primary, you got signs already out. How long is it for the primary to the election?
So, you get from June to August for the primary.
But, but you've got, yeah. So, you've got, that's an election. The primary would be an election, so there's a.
A period for that.
It's a period of time for that. And then you've got, then it would be.
Because you don't take your signs down.
Right. So, it's 60 days between the, between the primary and the, and the general?
So, do it 60 days.
So, if you change that 30 to 60, I think you're covering the issue that I think you're looking at, but.
Okay. And I think if you put that day of qualification as opposed to, or you just, you won't even leave that out completely?
Yeah, we won't leave that out completely. So, it'll be, because the election, primary or general is the election, that would be the, the thing that we would count from. And then if the board is okay with 60 days in front of the election, then that, that would you make that change?
I think 10 days is a better amount of time to pick up the signs.
So, that's your motion?
That is a motion.
So, for clarification, it should say duration of 60 days immediately prior to an election, and then the removal is 10 days after the election.
Perfect.
Thank you.
That's good. Okay. So, I have a motion.
So, move.
I'll second.
Okay. So, this is by roll call vote.
All righty. District 2, Commissioner Waitman.
Aye.
District 3, Commissioner Starkey.
Aye.
District 4, Commissioner Yeager.
Aye.
District 5, Commissioner Mariano.
Aye.
District 1, Chairman Oakley.
Aye. Motion passed 5-0.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you.
Thank you. Now, we move to P 60.
Prep a publication Tampa Bay Times, October 27th, 2024, and by affidavit of certified mailings and site postings.
Okay. Item P 60 is PDE 250002, an ordinance amending the Pasco County Comprehensive Plan, providing for a small-scale comprehensive plan amendment to the future land use map, Maps 2-15 and Sheet 23, from COM, Commercial, to PD, Plan Development, on approximately 29.01 acres of real property located east of US 301 at the northeast and southeast corner of the intersection of US 301, which is Gall Boulevard, and Rowan Oak Riverway. And a text amendment creating subarea policy flew 7.77, which is the 301 East PD, and map amendments to the future land use map 2-9, adding subarea map 2-977, 301 East PD, and providing for additional text amendments as necessary for internal consistency, providing for repealer, separability, and an effective date. This comes to you with a recommendation to approve the proposed comprehensive plan amendment and adopt the ordinance by roll call vote. And there's a presentation if one is wanted.
Is anyone signed up for this?
No one signed up for this? Items?
Is there anyone in the audience wish to speak to this item? See no one. Pleasure the board for approval.
Second.
Got a motion and second, all by roll call vote.
District 2, Commissioner Waitman.
Aye.
District 3, Commissioner Starkey.
Aye.
District 4, Commissioner Yeager.
Aye.
District 5, Commissioner Mariano.
Aye.
District 1, Chairman Oakley.
Aye. Motion passed 5-0. Move on to P 61. Proof?
Prep a publication Tampa Bay Times, October 27th, 2024.
Okay. Item P 61 is PDE 250019, an ordinance amending the Pasco County Comprehensive Plan, providing for a comprehensive plan amendment to the future land use map, Map 2-15 and Sheet 14, from RES 3, Residential 3 Dwelling Units per Gross Acre, to RES 1, Residential 1 Dwelling Unit per Gross Acre, on approximately 41 acres of real property located 1.5 miles north of the intersection of State Route 52 and Bellamy Brothers Boulevard. Amendment to Map 2-3 Rural Areas and 2-21 Market Area 5, North Market Area, adding the subject parcel. An amendment to Maps 2-18 Market Area 2, South Market Area, and 2-22 Urban Service Area and Urbis Expansion Area, removing the subject parcel, providing for additional text amendments as necessary for internal consistency, providing for repealer, separability, and an effective date. This comes to you with a recommendation to approve the proposed comprehensive plan amendment and adopt the ordinance by roll call vote.
Okay. Is anyone signed up to speak?
No one signed up.
Okay. Is there anyone in the audience wish to speak to this item? See no one. Pleasure the board for approval. I got a motion.
Second.
Second. Is this roll call? Is this roll call or not?
Yes.
Yeah.
District 2, Commissioner Waitman.
Aye.
District 3, Commissioner Starkey.
Aye.
District 4, Commissioner Yeager.
Aye.
District 5, Commissioner Mariano.
Aye.
District 1, Chairman Oakley.
Aye. Motion passed 5-0. Move on to P 62.
Publication Tampa Bay Times, October 27th, 2024.
No action is required. Moving.
Correct. Item PDE 250020 is an ordinance by the Pasco County Board of County Commissioners amending the Pasco County Land Development Code, Section 604, Northeast Pasco Rural Protection Overlay District, Figure 604-1, Northeast Pasco Rural Protection Overlay District Boundary, Figure 604-2, Northeast Pasco Rural Scenic Roadways, Figure 604-4, Limits to Topographic Alterations and Other Sections as Necessary for Internal Consistency, Providing for applicability or repealer, separability, Inclusion into the Land Development Code, and an Effective Date. This comes to you with a recommendation to accept public comment. There is no action required by the Board of County Commissioners at this, as this is the first of the two public hearings. The second hearing, which is the adoption hearing, will be held December 10th, 2024, at 1:30 PM in Newport Ritchie. A presentation is available.
Okay. Is anyone signed up for public?
No one has signed up.
Is anyone in the audience wish to speak to this item?
What's your name?
See no, you want to speak to this item?
62, right?
Come forward. You speak today, you cannot speak next?
No. Nope. This is, she gets two shots at this one.
Oh, two shots on this. Okay. All right. I'll take that back.
All right. Nancy Hazel, 34110, a nice place, Dade City, Florida. I'd just like to request a short synopsis of what is involved in this particular ordinance. Thank you.
And that should be covered in the presentation.
Yeah, because I don't think anyone's talked to anybody.
Amy Hyler's coming up to give that. Thank you.
Okay. Here we go.
Good afternoon. Amy Hyler with Planning Development and Economic Growth. I can go ahead and go through the presentation just to give you some summary. So, this is the companion to the comprehensive plan amendment that was just adopted. What's happening is, is this is adding 41 acres to the northeast rural area. The amendment that you just adopted amended various maps that these were impacting. The issue or the challenge that occurred was that this proposal was in conflict with the urban service area and the rural area. So, this is just the LDC companion amendment to make sure it's all clean between the two guiding documents.
Except they didn't adopt the plan amendment, they continued it.
The one that was just adopted by roll call vote previously to this, the Rage Parcel.
Oh, okay. Gotcha.
Yep. Okay. So, property is located in the North Market Area. Here's your aerial view. So, this is what's, what we're calling the Rage Parcel. It's 41 acres off of Bellamy Brothers. It's a modification to simply just the figures of 6041, 6042, and 6044. What we're doing is with these figures, we're going to add the 41 acres to the figures that are embedded into, to the Northeast Rural 604 code, land development code. Okay. So, they were heard together on 8/22. The accompanying Rage Parcel was an amendment from RES 3 to RES 1. The reason why they were going from RES 3 to RES 1 was to allow for a minor rural subdivision. So, again, this is just the companion to that. So, this is 6041. We added the 41 acres to this visual or this figure. Here's the area that was added.
What did you add? I'm sorry. Can you go back?
Sure.
It's hard to tell.
So, it's on the bottom far right hand, or far left-hand corner. So, this is the original existing figure. And then the 41 acres have been added, or requesting to be added.
Oh.
So, it's just the corner. Yeah. Yeah, little corner on the side, around the bottom.
Okay.
This is the existing figure 6042 for the scenic roadways. And we've also added and extended the scenic roadways, so they will be subject to those sections of the code. And then this is your existing limits to the topographic alterations.
Okay. So, they're, so now they have to follow?
Yep. All, yeah. So, these are, so this is now the LDC component of it.
Okay.
So, because they're added, excuse me, added into the land development code for the Northeast Rural Protection Area, they are now following or subject to these figures.
And just for some of our new people, can you, do you, are you able to quote what those rules are that we put in place about the topograph, topo, topographical?
Not off the top of my head.
They can't change the, the height?
Oh, yes.
Can't go off the hills.
Is that not the same thing?
Yeah. You can't see it here, but in the legend, you'll see the slope grades. And so, they're going to have to honor those slope grades. So, they can't impact those slopes.
Yeah. Like in Claremont, they sold off their hills. And we didn't want that to happen here.
Yeah. You will also notice that based on the topographic changes, so this map was previously altered in 2023. So, this is another rendition to it. So, some of the data have actually changed based on the contours. And so, you'll notice the green areas in the previously existing one. So, this is the updated map, which shows that there's substantial change in some of the slope areas in the center of the map. So, they will have to be bound by that. But the 41 acres is not impacted by these contours.
Okay. All right.
So, then with that, we accept public comment and happy to answer any other questions.
All right. So, no one signed up?
No one signed up.
We already had one person speak. Does anyone else wish to speak this item? Yep. Come forward. Name, name and address.
Good afternoon. My name's Lynn Johnson with Johnson Pope Law Firm. I represent the applicant, the Rage family. Just by way of further explanation, this whole process that we've gone through for quite some time with staff's help is simply to build an additional house. There's one house on 41 acres. We want to build another house for the son. And that's, that's what this whole thing has been about.
Okay.
Any questions I could help with? All right. Thank you so much.
Thank you. All right. No action today. So, we'll move on to P 63.
Prep a publication Tampa Bay Times, October 30th, 2024.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Brian Hoven, Director of Community Services, joined again by Leana Dean from Bay Care. Leana is the Chair for your Advisor Board, the Pasco County Commission on Human Trafficking. And today is the public hearing for the adoption of an ordinance that I will go ahead and read into record. An ordinance by the Pasco County Board of County Commissioners amending Sections 210-36 and 210-37 of the Pasco County Code of Ordinances pertaining to posting of human trafficking, public awareness signs, providing for servability, providing for inclusion into the Code of Ordinances, and an effective date. This ordinance amends the current required human trafficking signage and it updates the contact number for victims and others, so to be consistent with a recent change in Florida statutes. We prepared a short presentation detailing that. Would the board like to see that?
Pleasure the board.
Okay.
Okay.
Move to public comment, I guess.
Do we have anyone sign up for public comment?
No one has signed up.
Is anyone in the audience wish to speak to this item on public comment? See no one. Pleasure the board for approval.
Second.
Got a motion and second?
Roll call.
Is this roll call?
District 2, Commissioner Waitman.
Aye.
District 3, Commissioner Starkey.
Aye.
District 4, Commissioner Yeager.
Aye.
District 5, Commissioner Mariano.
Aye.
District 1, Chairman Oakley.
Aye. Motion passed 5-0. Thank you. P 64.
Prep a publication Tampa Bay Times, October 30th, 2024.
Good afternoon, Chairman, Commissioner, Counselor Justin From, Fire Marshal for Pasco Fire. P 64 is referencing FR 25-1079, an ordinance amending the Pasco County Code of Ordinances, Chapter 46, Article 2, and Chapter 18, Article 3, to update those ordinances relating to the county fire marshal. Clarifying the county marshal's role and responsibilities, updating the fire safety inspection provisions of the Code of Ordinances to reflect current state law and current county organization. Providing for new procedures relating to this middle fire inspection report to the county fire marshal, providing for other amendments as necessary for internal consistency, providing for servability, providing for inclusion in the code, and providing for an effective date. We also have a short presentation prepared if needed.
Pleasure the board. Does, do we have anyone sign up to speak this item?
No one has signed up.
Does anyone in the audience wish to speak?
I think I'd like to say.
You're going to do a, if you're going to do a presentation.
Let's do the presentation before we, I've got someone back here wanting to speak. All right. Do the presentation.
So, we can advance to the next slide. So, previous slide, please. So, under state statute 633312 and Board Administrative Code 69A, that brought us to a position where any third-party fire protection contractor is required to report their findings and reports to the local authority having jurisdiction. We recently found a software that would process and prove the means and mechanism that set you 321, subsection 3A, references by means of reporting to the authority having jurisdiction. That'll streamline that process for all of our customers, and there'd be a consistent flow for all of our employees and staff on getting those. This software that we found has a direct interlink to our current RMS system. So, real-time, our men and women in the field will have those third-party reports as well regarding fire protection systems, alarm systems, breaker systems, any deficiencies that any third-party contractor may find. We reached out to Mr. Stein-Snyder and his SNAF to seek their recommendation. And in those conversations, turning parts, we discovered several areas that didn't parallel the language of our local ordinance into state statute and Florida Administrative Code. So, your strike-throughs and markups is reference changes to what we originally had as fire safety inspector, to the fire marshal as the authority having jurisdiction, and then identifying fire safety inspectors as the reports to the fire marshal for carrying out their roles and responsibilities. Next slide. And it's the, the changes to article, or. And it's the, the changes to article, or chapter forty-six, Article two, as those language changes referenced, the addition of the twelve, subsection twelve, collection reports from the third-party inspections to include that uniform summary inspection report. And next slide is Chapter eighteen, Article three. This was under the building permit section, and it again is just changing that language from fire safety inspector to fire marshal and correcting the spelling on martial to marshal.
Is that your alias?
Sir?
Is that your alias?
Sometimes, sir.
And that concludes anything that we have prepared.
Okay, I think I have someone about to speak. Does it say a hand raised or not? Okay.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
So the way it's set right now, you guys have a system as far as when you're going to go out and check on these systems? Like maybe once every two years, three years, four years, five years? How does that work?
That's correct. So we're charged actuarially by Code and statute to perform routine fire life safety inspections. Part of that inspection process is ensuring that the business owner or the property owner is keeping all their private protection systems inspected and certified through a third party. So hood suppression systems in the kitchens, commercial kitchens, sprinkler systems, fire alarm systems. Extinguishers have to be certified and inspected annually. That's beyond the scope of our staff and our team. Part of our process is ensuring that they are doing that. That third-party contractor, whenever they perform that on an annual or even every six-month period, they are charged with reporting that to the authority having jurisdiction. And we've gotten those in the means of telephones, emails, fax, transmittals. This system that we'd like to put in place would streamline that for all of our customers. There's one single platform for reporting, and it all funnels to our RMS system on that location or the property.
Now, from what I understand, talking to a citizen who just went through a inspection, went through it and certified as fire extinguisher, then lasts for a year, and the company, third-party company comes out to go certify it again the next year. Doesn't mean they changed the fire extinguisher, and from what I understand, those things can last like five years.
Correct. Depending on the type of the manufacturer, every five to ten years, they are due for hydrostatic testing. On their annual inspection, they're ensuring that it's intact, it's labeled appropriately, it's charged, and it's hung correctly. We ensure that they have the right number for that type of occupancy and that their sticker is current. And then if it needs recharge, if the tamper seal's replaced, that's all on the third party.
Is it, is it a state mandate that makes you do it every year?
Yes, sir.
Or is it us?
Yeah, the state.
So every, every year, someone's going to have a fire extinguisher?
Under state statute, administrative code, and the Florida Fire Prevention Code, those are required annually.
No. So then this third-party inspector with the fire extinguisher was to go check it and certify it?
Yes, sir.
Can he just said, the third-party now send it to you so that you know, so you don't have to go out there and go check it?
So beyond the extinguishers, we're checking for means of ingress, egress, any other outstanding fire life safety hazards such as electrical hazards, any interior build-outs that would reconfigure the fire life safety floor plan. Access as far as NOCS access for after-hours access for our crews, our fire department access around the building, private protection systems, hydrants. So it's beyond that, the component of the, an extinguisher being certified is a small component of our overall, the totality of our overall inspection.
But so is your plan to go, so by state statute, you're telling me you have to go out there every single year to every single business and check them all over?
For the extinguishers or for our?
Your own inspection.
For our own inspection, our goal is annually. Yes, sir.
That's your goal. What I'm saying is, is the state mandating you do it every year?
The state, in the state statute and Florida Fire Prevention Code, it says periodic. There is an industry standard that the goal and the benchmark is annually, but to afford, to afford a mechanism for jurisdictions that are understaffed, and the NFPA changed that standard to a one, two, or three-year review. To, in that technical committee, it was all spoken by the AHJ that was charged with doing them annually and didn't have the resources. We were fortunate enough a few years ago with full support of the commission to implement the fee schedule that increased our FTE counts, and we're able, and we're on track to, to provide those annually.
All right, so again, I don't know if I want to, you guys think about this, do you want to have your business people spend a hundred dollars every year for every inspection? And then all the seventy-five dollars?
I think it's two hundred dollars. How much is the, isn't it two hundred dollars?
For our, our fee?
Your, what is your fee?
Our minimum is one hundred dollars.
But what is it? That's the minimum, but what do you charge?
One hundred dollars. Covers up to fifteen thousand square feet.
Yeah, I thought it was two hundred dollars.
No, ma'am.
So a hundred.
So this is ever for fifty thousand. You're doing this every business every year. Is that correct?
Yes, sir. Commissioners, I could just interject for a second. We've, we've recognized that, you know, that we have some, some rub with some of the business owners, and we're working with the fire marshal right now to prioritize some of the low occupancy, low-risk buildings to where we tend those every two to three years. And then, of course, the higher-risk, high-occupancy buildings, expecting those every year. So we are working with the fire marshal at this time to kind of prioritize the scheduling so that we can kind of...
Because, because the thing that bothers me about it is you can do an inspection every year, you can pay the hundred, pay the seventy-five, and it can go on and on every year. And all you're changing is someone marking it a stamp on a fire extinguisher for another five years. To me, those things should be, if they need, if the state mandated every year for the fire extinguisher, so be it. But if that was the case, it was mandated, they should just even send a quick email saying this thing's been checked over. Save our guys from coming in there and deal with other bigger issues.
Yes, sir. And we agree. And, you know, that would fall on place of, you know, we inspected a business and they were compliant, they had their everything, you know, there's a fire extinguisher certified and everything was up to code, then we would probably revisit those in a three-year time, two-year time, depending on their occupancy level and their risk level.
Sounds like a better way to go. Thank you.
Part of, part of the issues we've had with some of our citizens, they feel like they're being, maybe they feel like they've been targeted or something because they seem like they're getting these inspections all the time, and other people are not getting inspected, and that's, that's an issue we have out there, that people think that. If, where it be true or not, they, they still think that they're maybe being targeted on some of that. But fact of it is, this, this inspection is more than just a fire extinguisher up to, up to par. The fact of it is, we have to have, make sure nobody's done additions inside that break where they did not get a permit for electrical and things of that nature that may cause a hazard in that business. And that's, that's the purpose of inspection, I believe, so.
Absolutely, yes, sir. And that's, that's our ultimate goal is, is safety of the citizens inside of a public building. So, you know, Chief From does a fantastic job. I don't know if he told you or not, but he was elected Fire Marshal of the Year this year because of the job that he does. So, but we are going to look at prioritizing some of those processes that we have. The businesses that are compliant, we can, you know, look at extending out their periods of inspections if we have to. And then, you know, those who aren't, you know, of course, following through with the life safety codes that we are required to follow through with.
But the state actually requires you to do once a year, annual inspections? Or is that our?
It's one to three-year. They leave it on?
On the state?
Yes, sir.
For clarification, it is periodic by the state language. And then there is a standard set by the NFPA that affords that flexibility.
Okay. Any other questions here?
I'd like to say congratulations.
Yeah, holding back on us, chief.
It wasn't my award, it was the team award, and it was well-deserved and works out to be recognized by the state and then the spring at the Capitol.
And who's that guy standing next to you? He didn't announce who he was in the microphone?
This is the, the fire chief of Pasco County Fire Rescue. And we also thank you for your confirmation of that.
But he's dressed down for the afternoon.
It's hot, sir.
Well, we just want to make sure it's right, and we want to make sure our citizens are treated right, and we're doing the right thing to keep all of our citizens safe.
And that's the overall interest, Chairman, the protection of the citizens as well as of the property owners. You know, when we find ourselves in the business, and it is year after year, and it's the same violations year after year, something as simple as the extinguishers, you know, it's a matter of time getting in those businesses, keeping them educated, informed, and then the accountability component of making sure they're complying for the overall interest of everybody.
Right, I understand that. Any other questions by the board? Seeing one in the audience wish to speak to this item?
No one has signed up.
No one signed up? Okay, seeing no one, pleasure of the board. Roll call.
Second.
It's a roll call.
That's a roll call vote.
District two, Commissioner Waitman.
Aye.
District three, Commissioner Starkey.
Aye.
District four, Commissioner Yeager.
Aye.
District five, Commissioner Mariano.
Aye.
District one, Chairman Oakley.
Aye. Motion passed five zero.
Thank you.
We'll move now to the public hearings. Mr. Steinsteiner, would you give us the procedures?
I will be happy to, Mr. Chairman. There are two rezoning agendas, regular consent, each staff, this, regular consent, staff will present each application to the Board of County Commissioners. If staff or planning commission has recommended approval and there is no opposition, the application will be considered by the board without further presentation. If staff or planning commission has recommended denial, or if there is opposition to the application, the applicant will be given five minutes for presentation. The opposition will be given three minutes for each individual or five minutes for a group representative, and the applicant will be given three minutes for rebuttal. Any individual disagreeing with staff or planning commission recommendation or anyone wishing to object to any condition of the rezoning may at this time request that a petition be pulled from the consent agenda, in which case that application will be heard under the regular agenda later on during the meeting. Otherwise, all rezoning applications on the consent agenda will be approved by a single motion and vote. If you wish to speak to any petition, please give your name and address and whether or not you've been sworn for the record. These are quasi-judicial public hearings. The law in Florida is mere public support. Or opposition of an application is insufficient for this board to take action. Please limit your comments to those criteria found within the board's Land Development Code for rezoning. Madam Clerk, would you like to swear the public in, please?
Yes, if anybody would like to speak this afternoon, please stand, raise your right hand. Do you swear affirm the testimony you are about to give is the truth? So help you God.
All right, the first item is P sixty-five, or we have proof?
We have proof, Tampa Bay Times, September eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-four, and by affidavit of certified mailings and site postings.
Okay, Patrick Dutter, again, Planning Development Economic Growth Department. Item P sixty-five is PDE twenty-five CU zero three. It's a conditional use for a wireless communication facility. Cynthia M. Barthol, Anthem Net Inc., Verizon Wireless. This, the agenda note, I'm sorry, the agenda noted that this was a continuance item. However, the applicant has withdrawn this item and no further action is required.
Okay.
What?
That takes care of that item.
Withdrawn.
All right, we'll move on to P sixty-six.
P sixty-six, proof of publication Tampa Bay Times, September eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-four.
Item P sixty-six is PDE twenty-five zero zero one eight. It is a Conference Plan Amendment rural area for an urban expansion area. A continuance is being requested to the January fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-five BCC at one thirty PM in Date City.
Move to continue, time certain.
Second.
Got a motion second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, move on to P sixty-seven.
P sixty-seven, Tampa Bay Times, October twenty-seventh, two thousand and twenty-four, and by affidavit of certified mailings and site postings.
Item P sixty-seven is PDE twenty-five seven six eight three. It's a zoning amendment in the name of Crossways MPUD, Crossways three oh one LLC. Applicant is requesting a continuance to the January fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-five BCC at one thirty PM in Date City.
Move to continue, time certain.
Second.
Got a motion second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passed five zero. Move on to P sixty-eight.
Tampa Bay Times, October twenty-seventh, two thousand and twenty-four.
Item P sixty-eight is PDE twenty-five seven seven three eight. It's a zoning amendment in the name of Evans County Line eighty MPUD. Applicant is requesting a continuance to the February eleventh, two thousand and twenty-five BCC at one thirty PM in Date City.
Move to continue, time certain.
Second.
Got a motion second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passed five zero. Move on to P sixty-nine.
Proof of publication Tampa Bay Times, October twenty-seventh, two thousand and twenty-four.
Item P sixty-nine is PDE twenty-five seven seven three nine. It's a zoning amendment in the name of Fletcher MPUD. The memorandum states a continuance to December tenth, two thousand and twenty-four. However, staff is requesting a continuance to the January twenty-eighth, two thousand and twenty-five Board of County Commissioners meeting at one thirty PM in Newport Ritchie.
Move to continue, time certain.
Second.
Got a motion second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passed five zero. Move on to P seventy.
Tampa Bay Times, October twenty-seventh, two thousand and twenty-four, and by affidavit of certified mailings and site postings.
Item P seventy is PDE twenty-five seven seven six four. It's a zoning amendment in the name of three oh one East MPUD Master Plan Unit Development, three oh one East LLC. Rezoning from R one, sorry, RMH Mobile Home District and C two General Commercial District to an MPUD Master Plan Unit Development District to allow for the development of two hundred townhomes and thirty-six hundred square feet of commercial on approximately twenty-nine point zero one acres with variations as stated in your agenda packet. This comes with a recommendation to approve with conditions from the Planning, Development, and Economic Growth Department and the Planning Commission.
Is, uh...
This is the first item in your consent agenda.
Do one more.
This is the first item in your consent agenda.
Oh, yeah. This is a consent item. Is anybody here to speak against this item?
No one has signed up.
No one's signed up. Here, here no one. Leave it on consent. Move to P seventy-one.
Proof of publication Tampa Bay Times, October twenty-seventh, two thousand and twenty-four, and by affidavit of certified mailings and site postings.
Item P seventy-one is PDE twenty-five seven seven nine five. It's a zoning amendment in the name of Northridge MPUD Master Plan Unit Development, Northridge eight two nine LLC. A substantial modification to increase the residential density from seven hundred units to seven hundred and fifty-eight units, which are going to be detached and villas, on approximately one hundred and seventy-eight point fifteen acres. This comes with a recommendation to approve with conditions from the Planning, Development, and Economic Growth Department and the Planning Commission.
Is anyone here to speak against this item?
No one has signed up.
Hear no one. Leave it on consent. Move to P seventy-two.
Proof of publication Tampa Bay Times, October twenty-seventh, two thousand and twenty-four.
Item P seventy-two is PDE twenty-five seven eight one four. It's a zoning amendment in the name of thirty-nine and Chansey LLC, thirty-nine and Chansey. Change in zoning from a C one neighborhood commercial district to a C two commercial district with a voluntary agreed-upon deed restriction, limiting the use of the use, limited the uses to the uses that are consistent with C two district, also known as the Live Local Act deed restriction. This comes with a recommendation to approve from the Planning, Development, and Economic Growth Department and the Planning Commission.
Okay. Is anyone here to speak against this item?
No one has signed up.
No one's signed up. All right, leave it on consent. Move on to P seventy-three.
Proof of publication Tampa Bay Times, October twenty-seventh, two thousand and twenty-four.
Item P seventy-three is PDE twenty-five seven eight one five. It's a zoning amendment in the name of four eight oh two Southeast Hundred and Twenty-second Place LLC, Mitchell, Land O' Lakes Boulevard, and Gator Lane. Change in zoning from an AR agricultural residential district to a C two general commercial district with a voluntary agreed-upon deed restriction limiting the uses to the uses that are consistent with the C two district, also known as the Live Local Act deed restriction. This comes with a recommendation to approve from Planning, Development, and Economic Growth Department and the Planning Commission.
Okay, is anyone here wish to speak against this item?
No one has signed up.
No one's signed up.
Chair?
Yes, sir.
Question for staff, quick. I think we talked about this, right, Mike? Because it's proximity to the school. I just hope the use is complementary for school safety and you name it, not a lot of high-density traffic running through there. But I just want to make sure that it's complementary use with its proximity to the school there for safety purposes.
We have to file deed restriction in terms of uses, and obviously those uses would be designed in accordance with our site plans. Which would, which count for safety.
Does that answer your question?
C two has more traffic than C one?
Generally, it should.
Does that answer your question, Mr. Waitman?
Yes.
Okay, leave it on consent. Move to P seventy-four.
Proof of publication Tampa Bay Times, September the eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-four, and by affidavit of certified mailings and site postings.
Item P seventy-four is PDE twenty-five seven eight one six. It's a zoning amendment in the name of Old Pasco West MPUD Master Plan Unit Development, Mary Elaine Sharp and Maxine Green. A rezoning petition from MPUD Master Plan Unit Development to an MPUD Master Plan Unit Development to allow ninety-nine single-family detached dwelling units on approximately seventy-six point five five acres with the variations as stated in your agenda packet. I'd like to note that there was an ex parte communication with Commissioner Yeager, Commissioner Waitman, Commissioner Mariano, Commissioner Starkey that didn't make your agenda packet. These will be provided to the clerk's office. This comes with a recommendation to approve with conditions from the Planning, Development, and Economic Growth Department and the Planning Commission.
Okay. Is anyone here wish to speak against this item?
No one has signed up.
I have someone raise their hand, but hold on, we'll pull that item. P seventy-four is pulled. We'll move on to P seventy-five.
Proof of publication Tampa Bay Times, September the eighteenth, twenty twenty-four, and by affidavit of certified mailings and site postings.
Item P seventy-five is PDE twenty-five seven-eight-two-three. It's a zoning amendment in the name of Anodyne fifty-four LLC, Anodyne fifty-four LLC East. Change in zoning from a C one neighborhood commercial district to a C two commercial district with a voluntary agreed upon deed restriction, limiting the uses to the uses that are consistent with the C two district, also known as the Live Local Act deed restriction. This comes with a recommendation to approve from the Planning Development and Economic Growth Department and the Planning Commission.
Is anyone here wish to speak against this item?
No one has signed up.
No one's signed up. Seeing no one, leave it on consent. Move on to P seventy-six.
Proof of publication Tampa Bay Times, September fourth, twenty twenty-four, and by affidavit of certified mailings and site postings.
Item P seventy-six is PDE twenty-five seven-eight-two-six. It's a zoning amendment in the name of Sun Coast Lakes MPUD Master Plan Unit Development, Pasco County Planning Services Division. A modification to the previously approved master plan and conditions of approval to reflect the, reflect, reflect and memorialize subsequent revisions thereto on approximately four hundred and eighty-three point five acres. This comes with a recommendation to approve with conditions from the Planning Development and Economic Growth Department and the Planning Commission.
Okay, is anyone here, is anyone sign up to speak against this?
No one has signed up for seventy-six.
Is anyone, I just wish to speak against this item? Seeing no one, leave it on consent. Move to P seventy-seven.
Tampa Bay Times, September eighteenth, twenty twenty-four, and by affidavit of certified mailings and site postings.
Item P seventy-seven is PDE twenty-five seven-eight-two-seven. It's a zoning amendment in the name of CyTex NR Holding LLC. Change in zoning from AR agricultural residential district to a C two general commercial district with a voluntary agreed upon deed restriction, limiting the uses to the uses that are consistent with C two district, also known as the Live Local Act deed restriction. This comes with a recommendation to approve from Planning Development and Economic Growth Department and the Planning Commission.
We do have someone signed up on the web to speak. Tyler Sudeth.
On this item?
On this item.
Okay, we'll pull this item. And we'll come back to it.
Are you sure that that's not part of the applicant team? Tyler Sudeth is shown as, is shown as Sudeth Civil.
Tyler Sudeth? Sudeth Civil LLC, I can't really tell.
Maybe I have to ask him.
Mr. Sudeth, Mr. Sudeth, are you in, in support or opposition to this application?
I'm in support of the applicant. I'm not just signed up.
Okay. So that's P seventy-seven?
Yeah.
Okay, all right. That will remain on consent. And now entertain a motion for all those consent items that we kept on consent.
Move forward.
Second.
Motion, second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes five zero. We will go back to P seventy-four. And the person that was come forward who wished to speak against this item? Name and address for the record.
Hi, my name is Tara Castro. I'm at two-six-four-four-five Lawrence Avenue in Wesley Chapel, Florida, three-three-five-four-four. I'm concerned in regards to all this planning and the development, in regards to our plan and development code. I feel like we are not following all the codes that were enforced, including infrastructure. That is nine oh one. We always jump from the infrastructure and then we go to storm drainage and then we go to flooding. We have had consistent horrible flooding for my citizens here in Pasco County. I want to ask you, is there no countywide storm management plan? Because the long-term, the land development code or the planning development code eleven oh four, I should say, says development will hold the one percent or a hundred year storm. But we now have proof that did not happen. So again, when we start approving all these buildings for these developers, we're not considering the existing homeowners and the building codes that were required when they built their home. It says in eleven oh four, the developer has to prevent neighborhood, neighborhoods and adjacent use to be free from flooding or rescues. There was two thousand evacuees by fire and rescue and a hundred and eighty-eight rescues during Milton. Unacceptable. We are behind the time in our infrastructure. I want to give you a personal note. Calling nine-one-one from my house with my son having a medical emergency. You know how long it took Pasco thirteen to show up at my door from the time I called? Twenty-two minutes. That's death. Seconds matter. Coming from Phoenix. From the time you call nine-one-one to the time they show up at your door, two minutes. That's a huge difference. Seconds matter. Again, our storm drainage, our storm water. We keep pushing it off and saying, it's your fault, it's the homeowner's fault. But you know what? None of these communities that were built got flooded out except for existing homeowners. And I want to urge you to please vote no for any more development until you get Army Corps of Engineers that you said you requested or there was a request from Pasco on October twenty-sixth Town Hall meeting that they were requested to come in here. I've dealt with Army Corps of Engineers and my other property in another state. I know what it takes. It didn't take me a week to fix the problem. It took me two months to fix a problem this big. So the match, the flooding that has happened here in Pasco County, it's not going to take a few weeks. Why continue to contribute when you are behind the times? Traffic is unbelievable, as I mentioned earlier in my meet, in my, at the public's saying. We cannot continue to add more cars to these roads. Old Pasco is not two ways, all the way through to Wesley Chapel Boulevard from fifty-two. You're stopping at Sunny. Please consider infrastructure.
Thanks for your comments.
Did you say?
No comments.
Two-six-four-four-five Lawrence Avenue in Hudson? Lawrence, L-A-W-R-E-N-C-E. I'm in the back of Quill Hollow by Cypress Creek and I'm in a high flood zone, AE. So I'm very concerned.
Okay, thank you. Okay, pleasure to the board.
Ms. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I had talked with the applicant and one of the things we talked about was infrastructure out front. Could we have staff explain a little bit about what's the progression for Old Pasco Road getting paved?
That's happened. Yes, sir.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Nick, your end county engineer. Question was, when is it going to be widened? I think you said paved, but we're talking about when will be widened it to four lanes.
Going from two to four lanes from, let's say...
So we're currently under contract with BRW to widen it to four lanes up to the entrance to the school. And then we have design and construction funding in our five-year capital program to widen the southern piece from Wesley Chapel Boulevard up to Sunny Drive. We do not have the widening of Old Pasco Road in our capital program for the next five years from the school to State Route fifty-two.
Okay, so going up to the north of this property, you've got, this is development coming across the way that may be coming forward. I think we've talked about this one. This one here, they're both going to be entitled to putting turn lanes in place, which could go toward widening of the road. Is there any way we can look at trying to work with them to try to bring that infrastructure instead of doing it, then redoing it and just doing it in one shot?
We can certainly discuss that with the developers. And the idea would be, instead of building turn lanes on a two-lane road that would eventually be torn out when we build a four-lane road, we would put some of the money they would expend toward the widening of the four-lane road. The challenge we have is timing. They're ready to go soon and we're not queued up and ready to go with the widening. We don't have design plans established. We don't have construction funding in place to pay the additional cost that would be incurred by the shortfall between the total cost of the project and the amount they would contribute for their turn lanes. So we can have the discussion, but we would have, have to do some internal digging to determine how to reallocate resources within our capital program if that were the board's direction.
Do we have right-of-way on both sides? Do you know?
Now you're testing the limits of my memory. I, I don't think we do continuously. I think there is a right-of-way acquisition component as well.
Okay.
But I'd have to verify that.
Part of this project, one of the things we're going to do is to build upon what's going to be, to be anticipated for the road that was going to be needed in their property. Are you familiar with that?
Yes.
Okay. So that should help with the stormwater up front?
It absolutely helps with stormwater management for the widening of the road, yes.
Okay. As far as the ELAM land above, above, is there something that we've, we've looked at maybe to increase even more stormwater capacity up there in our own lands?
That's, could you re-ask that question? I'm sorry.
So to the north of this property, on the west side of the road, right up, we're budding this property in, in above. We own like two pieces of ELAM property. Is there ways to maybe improve the stormwater retention up in that area?
Boy, that's outside of my expertise to answer on the fly. We have not considered that, to my knowledge, but it's certainly something we could look into further.
Okay. So to the board, this developer mentioned they were flexible in foregoing if we choose to. And we'll take more conversation with Nick. The, the left turn lane monies and just give us the money toward building the road? I think the other developer that I talked to a year ago referenced the same type of thing. There's a sidewalk going on the left side of this road?
Left being west.
On the west side, yes.
Correct.
Yeah, west side.
Okay.
Yes.
So can the developer build that sidewalk and not have to worry about it being torn out to the specifications that we're looking for at this point?
Let's see if we can have the applicant team come for rebuttal and, and talk to us about those things.
I, I can, but I want to, while he's here.
So what we've said is, is that we would like the applicant to construct the sidewalk as a five-foot sidewalk, presuming we are not ready to build the ultimate section of Old Pasco up to fifty-two or at least up to their entrance commensurate with their schedule. We've asked them to build a five-foot sidewalk because it is difficult to know exactly where to build the wider pathway that we would like to have in that segment of Old Pasco Road without doing the design for the entire road and establishing both horizontal and vertical location for the pathway. So we don't want to put twelve feet down and then have to tear twelve feet out. We're willing to let them do five feet as a temporary condition and then when we come in and do the twelve foot later, we would have to potentially remove the five and construct the full twelve.
Yeah, and I'll say, to the way this project constructed, there's some homes out toward the end to the northern part of the parcel, that a certain number of homes have to walk a little bit further to get to a sidewalk going to the south. But to build the sidewalk and spend that money and then tear it back out, I don't know if that's the best thing to do.
Yeah, one thing, sweet.
So maybe we should hear from the applicant a little bit, she can talk a lot.
Well, and Commissioner, it's a question of timing. So similar to your suggestion about the turn lanes, we've said to the applicant, if we know we have a capital project coming in the near future in the years one, two, or three of our capital program for construction, we would allow them to pay us for the sidewalk in lieu of constructing a five-foot and then us tearing it out and placing, and placing a permanent larger facility in its location. Same thing with the turn lanes. If we have a project coming soon that will allow for us to put their contribution as cash toward the construction of a wider road, then it makes sense for them to pay us. If the capital project is years away, then we sometimes need to spend some money on the short side, even if it's a throwaway improvement, because we're going to use that throwaway improvement for five years until that capital project comes to fruition.
Well, especially if you're talking about sidewalks.
Sidewalk connectivity is very important. So is safety for the community, the people injuring the community that need to make that left turn. We want to make sure that that turn lane is in place when people start to reside in the community. So that, that's where we really struggle with. You know, we, we can, we can accelerate when we know we have a capital project that can catch up in a very short amount of time, but we don't want to leave, you know, we want to measure that, that lag time in months, not years, if you will. If we said, hey, maybe in a few months, we'll have that turn lane in place in the four-lane road, that's a, that's a reasonable condition. If we say, we'll get there in three or four years, that's a long time for residents to be making left turns from a through lane and, and frustrating motorists in both directions along the corridor, which tends to lead to people behaving in less safe ways when they're traveling on our roadways.
Okay. All right, Dave.
I'm, I'm good, thank you.
Okay. Now the applicant will come forward with her team's rebut.
Do you want a presentation from staff first? Chairman, should we have a presentation from staff first?
We can have some, all right, staff can come in.
I mean, this was a consent item that was pulled for one speaker. It, it's up to the board whether they want a full presentation or they just want...
I, I was going to pull it myself until there was an objection to it, so I, I wouldn't mind seeing, having the board see the presentation. Okay.
Good afternoon, William Vermillion, Planning Development Economic Growth. This is the Old Pasco West MPUD, PDE twenty-five seventy-eight sixteen. Here is a rough location showing the, the subject site just to the west of I seventy-five on the west side of Old Pasco Road. This is a zoning amendment from MPUD to MPUD. This is the site of the previously expired Grantham MPUD with a future land use of residential one and residential three for a maximum development of ninety-nine single-family detached dwelling units on seventy-seven point eight-nine acres. Here is the subject site's location map. The zoning map reflecting the Grantham MPUD. Future land use showing res one and res three. Here is the applicant's master plan. You'll see a large portion of the site is category one wetland. Here is an overall context map showing the Orange Belt Trail to the north and the Central Pasco Employment Villages with Eagles one and two, as well as Mango Hill and Stillwell to the north along Old Pasco Road. The purple indicating Old Pasco Road. A large majority of the western portion is swift mud property within a state residential neighborhood. And then to the south, you can see the school site Cypress Creek, which the applicant would be constructing the sidewalk from their entrance down to that, that school site. They are seeking one variation from the code, from nine oh one sixty-eleven, to not provide interconnections to the north or to the west. Like Commissioner Mariano said, this subject site abuts ELAM property and ELAM land acquisitions properties in the future as shown by this exhibit here in your agenda packet. The red indicates acquired ELAM land. The purple is other public land acquisitions and the orange is currently on the acquisitions list. So staff is in support of that variation for the applicant. With that, it comes to you with a recommendation of approval with conditions from the Planning Commission as well as Planning Development and Economic Growth Department. I'm here if anyone has any questions.
Any questions?
Chair.
Yes, sir.
Thanks, Will. So Ms. Castro's concern is, after living through a pile of rain that we have, like we've heard so many times before, just looking for reassurance that this project, the water that's going to be, you know, moved around, manipulated on this project, that it's going to stay where it is and it's not going to flow west into, further into the Quill Hollow area. They're going to see more water. They already know that it's a wet place to live. They're looking for reassurance out of this staff and, you know, that the regulatory bodies, that it's going to be a good project. That water's going to mind its own business and it's not going to have any potential impact as it flows downstream and compound their concerns. That's what she was getting at. So just looking for reassurance. I think I asked the question correctly from staff that all the professionals are doing all the professional things to make sure that project's built correctly.
Absolutely, and this applicant will be following all the LDC provisions for stormwater management as well as the, the state requirement. So everything is above board's perspective.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Also, one more. Chair, Will, it's my understanding the county's not going to build this sidewalk towards the school. The applicant's volunteering to build this sidewalk to Cypress Creek.
Yes, sir.
Correct?
Correct.
So I think it would be in our best interest, should this be approved, that we take them up on the sidewalk, get sidewalk built. Because this proximity to the school, I think this project will be a very nice place for folks and kids will probably likely be going to and from the high school and middle school and maybe even the college, so, thank you.
Our applicant will come forward and tell us a little more about your project. I think it's all 60-foot wide lots, if I'm not mistaken?
Barbara Willhite, 6327, Grand Boulevard, Newport Ritchie, 34652, for the applicant. Yes, we are 60-foot lots, move-up product. Our land use allows up to 107, we're only doing 99. The prior approval, Grantham Ranch on this property, allowed 50-foot lots. We could have said we'll just reapprove that again, but the client really listened to what the district commissioner wanted to see for his district in this location, and he wanted to see 60-foot lots, and so we are, my client came back and said we'll do 60-foot lots. We are doing, we are in front of the infrastructure. We worked with staff to come up with Pond G, which is your, a pond for Old Pasco Road widening. I personally think by looking at it and our team looking at it, I think you probably have all the right-of-way. When you look at Old Pasco Road on Pasco Map, or you'll see right-of-way, and there's actually, when you look at this project, you'll see there's a cutout for a pond. So there has been work on this segment, so maybe this is a good segment for, if you confirm that you have the right-of-way, because now you have, we're constructing a pond, and I think it's the last pond that you need right-of-way for Pond G. I think you may have the right-of-way for this road and maybe it's something you can move up on your appropriation list. But that is obviously things that you have much more expertise in than I do. I can tell you that that pond is not a cheap endeavor. We're getting some mobility fee credits, but there's a lot of money that my client's putting into getting that pond done for the widening. And then, of course, we got ahead of the sidewalk issue, worked with your staff. We knew we needed to get our kids to the school and we moved forward and worked very diligently to come up with a condition that you heard the county engineer explain to you about how that works. It's construction, or if he's ready, we'll give him the cash. So I'm happy to entertain any questions, thoughts. We're looking forward to getting this approved. We've worked well with staff and carried along, and it's a good project.
This is also, you have public water and sewer at this location?
That's correct. Yes, we're consistent with the land use.
From Pasco County, I guess?
Yep, Pasco County water, Pasco County central sewer, central water, central sewer.
Any questions?
I'm happy to see a 60-foot subdivision coming in.
That's better, yes. Any other questions for the applicant? Blurs of the board?
I just, Chair, I just say I appreciate you guys taking my such critical questions and, you know, working through this and making it something good for folks to live, so that I'll move approval.
Second, a little discussion?
Okay, you got a motion, a second, and discussion?
I just want to say, Commissioner Wade, I appreciate you working on this one. Knowing your district and obviously as commissioners, we can't talk to each other, I don't think we're going to vote on, but I think it's a better product than we would have had before. I'm happy to hear more about that stormwater project being ahead of the game as well.
And I'm happy to hear that we're buying the land all around it. I wasn't aware of that, so.
Yeah.
It's already, a lot of, like, if you look in front of our project, you'll see there's a strip of right-of-way. Actually, when we were putting the sign up, and my son was putting the sign up and then putting it back up with the hurricane, he's like, Mom, what do I do? There's a strip of county property in front of this property. That's your future right-of-way. It already sits in front of this property, so look at that, because I think you've got a lot to do right-of-way for that expansion project already. So thank you.
Yeah, this property's sitting nestled in, right in with a lot of ELAM property for taking care of a lot of water issues and things in our area. So it's very good. Okay, so I got a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passed 5-0. We'll move on to, go back here. P-78.
Public publication, Tampa Bay Times, October 27, 2024, and by affidavit of certified mailings and site postings. We do have a speaker signed up for this item.
Liam Devine, Planning Development and Economic Growth Department. Just some housekeeping before I begin for P-78. There is a typo in the memo, it's in the background summary section. It currently reads petition number CU25-01, aka CU24-15. It should read petition number CU25-02, aka CU2415. So again, item P-78, and I'll just wait for the PowerPoint. It is PDE 25-CU02. It is a conditional use, conditional use request for 185-foot above-ground level Monopole Wireless Communication Facility in AR Agricultural Residential District. It's in the name of Southern 1 LLC Coral Towers LLC Verizon Wireless. The applicant proposed originally 185-foot above-ground tower, which includes a five-foot lightning rod. The site would be suitable for co-location of three additional carriers proposed for the location. It's on the north side of St. Joe Road, approximately one-half mile west of Roberts Barn Road. At the June 6, 2024 Planning Commission meeting, PC requested the applicant/owner to consider an alternative location on the subject property, explore alternative locations on the surrounding properties, provide site selection information, and have both the site selection expert and radio frequency engineer available at the next Planning Commission meeting on July 19. The owner/applicant modified the compound location, moving the fence compound area approximately 255 feet north of their original location and approximately 230 feet east onto the adjacent parcel, which is under the same ownership, with the proposed placement at the approximate 390 foot from the front property line. Prior site plan proposal was for 140 feet from the property line and approximately 230 feet east of the original location. The applicant did revise and modify their application from an 185-foot tower to 195-foot tower, so 190 feet of communication tower and then five feet for the lightning rod. This was due to the lower grade elevation with the new proposed site. It's located in the north-central Pasco County. It's on the north side of St. Joe Road, approximately half a mile west of Roberts Barn Road. The surrounding zoning is all AR. AR. The surrounding future land use is Res 1. Access to the overall site is from St. Joe Road. The facility's compound will be accessed through a proposed 30-foot wide access utility easement. This was the original proposed site plan for the location, which was closer to St. Joe Road with the 185-foot tower. And this is the new proposed location. And the proposed tower. The applicant did provide four photosimulations. Here are the subject sites. The first photosimulation is looking west, southwest at the intersection of Ruffing Road and Roberts Barn Road. To the right is, to the top right, Position 1 would be the existing and then proposed. Position 2 is looking southwest from Ruffing's Road and just north is St. Joe Road. Again, same thing, Position 2 on the top right would be existing and then below is the proposed. Position 3 is looking northwest on St. Joe Road with the existing proposed. And the last position, Position 4, is looking southeast on Swift Road. Again, top right is the existing, below is the proposed. And this is coming with recommendation for approval with conditions.
We do.
Okay.
John Terry?
You need to take the applicant first.
You may have the applicant first and then we'll take the person signing. Okay.
Good afternoon, I'm Matt Tania-John, 935 Main Street, Suite C4, Safety Harbor, Florida 34695. I apologize if I sound rushed today. I know you have a full agenda, so I will try to move as quickly as possible and not duplicate the items that staff showed you. If I'm...
And you have been sworn?
I have been sworn. I have David Smith with Verizon Wireless available to testify. Should you have any questions as to Verizon's RF need? I also have James McNichol, who oversaw the, or who heads up the team that handled site acquisition. And he's available to answer any questions on the site acquisition agent's challenges in bringing this. Finally, I do have David Talby, a certified property appraiser, available, and they have all taken an oath. All right, in all maps I show you today, up will be north unless I state otherwise. So just working through our base project information, you can see a map from the property appraisers website. You can see a line that's sneaking through the map from west to east, and that's St. Joe Road. And I have applied an orange arrow to the property that was the original location of Monopole Tower as it was brought to your planning commission back in June. You'll also notice a north-south line running through Commissioner Starkey. That's the old Orange Belt Railway, but that does not co-align with the current proposed alignment of the trail.
Sadly.
This is just a closer aerial. And again, you can see St. Joe Road running east and west. You can see Roberts Vault Road on the eastern side of the, or off to the east of the property. And you can also see on the parent parcel an arrow pointing to a pasture. That is the proposed location as it is now. Previously, it had been proposed further to the south and the west in this old remnant of an orange grove. That was significant to your neighbors to the west and also to your planning commission because on these wooded parcels to the west, I do have some single-family homes. And you can see properties along St. Joe Road. One thing that you will notice is that the residential uses in the area have tree coverage intervening between them and the parent parcel. And the orange arrow points to the location of the Monopole. This is just your zoning and future land use map. I won't waste time on it. This is an example photo of a Monopole-style communication tower. You've probably heard me say this more times than you care to recount, but a Monopole is a type of communication tower with a single support pole with no guy wires or ironworks extending out from it. It does have external antennas up top, so there's adequate space and airflow necessary to operate the antennas and the radios. This is the original sheet C1 that was brought before your planning commission in June. You can see the location of the Monopole in that lower southwest corner of the ranch property. At that time, there is, the nearest residential structure was 1.2 times tower height to the west-southwest of the proposed Monopole. Your planning commission asked us to go back, relook at some of our site acquisition and also look to see if this project could be modified to provide additional spacing from residential units and from St. Joe Road. We're pleased to be able to say that we were able to do that. At this time, the nearest residential structure is 2.8 times tower height to the west, so we've more than doubled it. Of course, you have the intervening trees in between, and it's moved to over 400 feet north of the St. Joe Road corridor. This is the original site plan sheet that was provided, and then this is the new sheet C2 that is in the record. Again, that's just for context to show the move. Verizon will be the anchor tenant. They will be located with, in the equipment compound, this is sheet C3 of the plans on file. The red arrow just shows Verizon's equipment pad. And then you have three green arrows just to show that the Monopole is designed to co-locate up to four users. Your code encourages this so as to minimize the need for additional towers in the area. So the idea is that Verizon comes along, they need this tower, this tower gets approved. But once, let's say AT&amp;T comes along, they are, your code encourages them to co-locate on existing towers. And then this is the elevation sheet. Verizon will be located at the top. On the left-hand side is the original Monopole as proposed. On the right-hand side is the Monopole as it's proposed now. It is 10 feet taller, but 15 feet downgrade for a net five feet shorter. Essentially, Verizon's trying to keep their antenna height the same above ground to keep their coverage area. It's no different than if I took these lights over your head and brought them down closer to the floor. They would cover a smaller area of the floor. It will have the code-required opaque fence at the base. I'm going to skip over the photosimulations, those were just presented to you, but I am available to answer any questions that you may have on them. We did also provide line of sight analyses for these properties to the west, since I can't get onto private property and take photos. And the first one is to my south-southwest. And a line of sight analysis is basically just applying, I want to say trigonometry, but it's probably just basic geometry to the view shed. So they know the, they have the average height of the trees in the area and the topography, and then also the average height of a person, and they can plot the view field. And I've highlighted that in blue. You can see the view field is generally blocked by the tree lines. And then also off to my northwest, same story. This, as I stated, this is for Verizon Wireless. You can see a map showing Verizon's existing towers in the area. The blue dots are existing sites, so you can see I-75 off to the west. You can see Dade Road off to the east. Blanton is just out of screen off to the north. And the yellow dot with the orange arrow applied is the proposed St. Joe site. You can see the existing towers. There's also a yellow dot at the very far north. That's the Verizon's proposed Blanton site that was approved earlier this year. And basically what Verizon is trying to do is provide coverage along St. Joe Road with this property and also soak up traffic from Lake Jovita to the south. And that has the benefit of making, well, first, putting the coverage in, it's just like when you added Ridge Road. As areas developed up, you had to add the road to hold the traffic. But then as the area developed, so when I was young, I used to, I remember State Road 54 was a two-lane road. You had to add lanes. Capacity does the same thing on our front. And so approving this tower makes the additional towers to the south, or to the west in the south function better because it frees up lanes for them. All right. This Monopole will have a dull gray finish and be completely dark at night. As I stated, I do have my site acquisition agent available, though those granular questions were more dealt by your planning commission. And I would respectfully remind you that communication towers are an essential service. It's part of our everyday life. Matter of fact, in Hillsborough County, over, actually in Pasco County, in 2021, 83.9% of all 911 calls received by your 911 center came via wireless numbers. And that's before I go into economic and educational impacts from the Internet of Things and how we are continuing to connect to the network. That concludes my presentation, and I'm available for any questions that you may have. Thank you.
Any questions? Okay.
John Terry?
John Terry?
John Terry.
Yes, sir. Name, name and address for the record.
Yeah, my name's John Terry. It's 34037 St. Joe Road, Dade City, Florida. And I just happen to live...
And you've been sworn? You've been sworn.
Yeah, I was sworn with the rest of the group.
You need to say that for the record, that's...
I'm not a public speaker, so bear with me, but, you know, I bought this land 20 years ago and I would expect, you know, it's an AR residential and I kind of hope the government would, you know, keep it that way. But I understand, you know, growth, but I just, I'm opposed to the, to the cell tower for just, you know, personal reasons, you know, health reasons. Nobody really knows about that, but just the aesthetics of it all. And it just appears that, I mean, just recently, in the last 10 years in this county, it's, I mean, the, you know, the unbridled growth. It's, it's just, I think it's detrimental. Because that one lady was talking earlier, it says Pasco is known for its quality of life. Maybe not so much now, you know? But, you know, the thing busts all kinds of, it's not consistent with the neighborhood. You know, this cell tower, and then it's three times as tall as the, as the supposed, you know, height restrictions. So at the end of the day, I just, you know, I know it's, I'm just, I'm not going to get anywhere with this, but I just wanted you to know I'm a... anywhere with this, but I just wanted you to know I'm opposed to it, and I'm sure that there's some other place they could put it. I mean, hell, they were trying to put another one down a mile down the street, so that's all I got.
Thank you for your comments. Is anyone else in the audience which should speak to this item? So you know one?
You know, I helped write that cell tower ordinance, and I guess, and I'm just dismayed at how high they have to go now, but I guess if we don't have them as high, then we have to have a lot more of them lower. So it's, it's an unfortunate situation that we all use our cell phones. Most of the new homes don't even have landlines anymore, so-
It would depend a lot on Wi-Fi.
I know where my house is in Aristida nestled into the woods there. Many of y'all have called me, I have to walk outside half the time to be able to make a phone call, and we've kept our landline even though we don't answer it. I, the same messages have been on there for the last three years, I'm never even listening, listen to the messages that are on there, but I have to keep it for 911 purposes because if my cellphone isn't going to work, how am I going to make a phone call if we have an emergency? So it's really frustrating that I don't have better cell service than have to waste all that money for an emergency. I understand the, no one would choose to have one, you know, right next to their home, I think, just especially for the aesthetics. We're not allowed to even discuss what health risks there might maybe, that's keeping away from us, but, so it's just a fact that we need to have these as part of our infrastructure. Did you, sorry, did you mention if you were landscaping around it?
This is Matt and I, John, and yes, this will have the codes-required landscaping buffer.
But is that going to be around the fence around the site, or is there anything on the road? Looks like there's, looks like that's an improved pasture and there's no landscaping where you're putting it now, is that correct?
It is on an improved pasture, yes. The landscaping is proposed around the base of the Monopole at the fence line.
The thing that I find that helps these, and, you know, this is not a requirement, but maybe the landowner will think about it, is if you have landscaping along the front of the road, you put in a few oak trees or whatever, then when you're driving along, at least that, you know, that can soften your view of seeing that tower from far away. So that's, that's a suggestion I would have to help keep the site a little bit camouflaged, but other than that, I'm going to be for approval.
Chair? Do you have something?
You have a question? Matt, is this, is this another location that was running parallel with the Hill Road location? So like, if this goes, I mean, so this is, were y'all looking at two different sites, this was followed through planning commission? So this, if this were approved, that would make up for that other site?
Commissioner Waitman, Matt and I, John, again, and while this will not replace the other site that was planned, the site I believe was called Vista Walk, that was planned as the eastern handoff as they are trying to pick up more traffic, you can imagine there from the Vista Walk community primarily. It's even more critical now that Vista Walk is not happening, so they weren't meant, they weren't applied through some form of gamesmanship, well, if we get one, we'll, you know, go with the other. They were planned as part of Verizon's overall commitment to improving its network in eastern Pasco County, like you see with the Blanton site up to the north, but it's even more important now that Vista Walk has gone away. Did I give you a $5 answer to a $1 question? I apologize.
Okay.
One more question. How many is this?
So Liam Devine, Planning Development and Economic Growth Department. I believe you were referring to the tower that's on St. Joe and Mount Zion Road. That item was withdrawn from consideration, that was P-65, so that one's not even under consideration anymore, that application is withdrawn.
So this, and then the customer there, he's asking, what kind of sound does this, do these cell towers radiate?
I can answer that. Matt and I, John, again, and the only sound that a communication tower makes is from its emergency backup generators. So the idea, because these are part of the E-911 system, they have to be able to operate when the power goes out, when we have something like a storm event. Those generators are tested once a month at most, and they are compliant with your noise ordinance, so usually they're enclosed in soundproofing, and they're rated for 65 decibels, usually at the compound fence. For reference, 65 decibels is akin to a conversation.
Thank you.
If you have rebuttal, you might as well do it now while you're at the podium.
Absolutely. So I would respectfully, I would respectfully submit that mere opposition to growth in the state of Florida is not competent substantial evidence. The case that goes back to that, and I apologize if I don't have the citation memorized, is called a PUPCA. I will take and place a copy of the Telecom Act of 1996, codified at 47 U.S.C., Section 332 into the record, just for my malpractice purposes, that states what the DIAS has acknowledged, that communication towers cannot be regulated on the basis of RF emissions.
Who can receive the file?
Thank you.
Second.
You got a motion, second?
If I may approach.
All those people say aye.
Aye.
One last thought, if I may, just because of the remark about how, you know, some people, you know, how you have to keep a hard line in your house, Commissioner Starkey, for 911 purposes. I had an RF engineer down in Collier County remark about that because we had people saying, coming up saying, well, if I go in my, if I go outside in my front yard, I'm just fine. And the RF engineer is thinking, well, what if you hurt yourself in your house and you can't drag yourself outside? What are you going to do? So having reliable service where we use it is important. That concludes my presentation, I would respectfully request to grant approval of this. Thank you.
Okay, move approval.
Okay, I got a motion.
I'll second. It's, I typically support cell towers, they're an unfortunate part of the way we communicate in today's world, and there's really not a way around them. Maybe in a couple of decades, we can get rid of cell towers and we use them a different way, but I'll stay consistent and second the motion.
And under discussion, we do have a provision in our code that if the tower is not being used, they have to lower it, because there was a time when those, they're called PWSSs, were lower, and now all of a sudden, they've gone back higher, but there was a time when they were lower and we could, we could have had people take off the top 20 or 30 feet, but-
All right, I have a motion in a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passed 5-0. Move on to P-79.
Perfect publication, Tampa Bay Times, September 18th, 2024, and by affidavit of certified mailings and site postings.
Liam Devine, Planning Development and Economic Growth Department. P-79, just some housekeeping. Staff has received two ex parte communications for this item from Commissioner Oakland, Commissioner Waitman, those have been sent to the clerk's office. This item was inadvertently put on the agenda as a regular item, I don't believe we have anybody signed up for public comment, so if you would like a presentation, I can certainly go through a presentation. This is PDE 25-7824 in the name of San Berdine LLC. Would the board like a presentation?
Chair? Yes.
I don't have, I'm good with this project, Liam. I am confused, you know, I'm a, I really like to see these minor rural subdivisions happening. I think they're a great product and value add to Pasco County, and it adds a real quality of life for folks to have a little piece of property and do what they want on it. But I am concerned that within the, and I learned through this project, that I am concerned that through this, the minor rural rules, you know, we kind of struggle as a county on how do we do these, but they're capped at 16 homes on a minor rural subdivision, from what I'm told. And I don't know how in the world you have 100 acres or 200 acres and you can only get 16 lots out of it. I don't understand the history, if it's arbitrary, I don't know if Carballo's looked into it even further, but as we just, hopefully, we see more of the minor rural subdivision projects that come through, that we don't accidentally hurt ourselves in bringing forth a good, good housing product by some capping 16, five-acre lots or whatever it might be throughout the course of that project, so that's all.
I think David has something there.
David Engel, Planning and Economic Development Director. I did a little bit of investigation on the 16-lot restriction, you know, cap, and we couldn't find any clear record, but from what I understand, it was based on the road improvements. If you had 30 or 40 homes, then you have to upgrade to a county standard road cross-section. So we'll take a look at this and we'll put it on the priority list, if you'd like, and we will get back to you.
That would be good, because that's part of the hurdles that when a minor rural comes, these trigger points, right, like this example that you just cited, we really need to get out of our own way and make, you know, allow these minor rural subdivisions to come to fruition, and that way folks aren't discouraged with bringing that type of product forward. I think that's what this board, we want to see more of throughout the entire county, if it's possible, and we just kind of work together to get out of our own way sometimes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman? Yes, sir.
To add on to that, earlier we've heard a presentation, that added property in the protection zone, all the long process you had to go through, the whole thing, and I think if you've got a large piece of property, maybe it's five acres, maybe it's less, maybe it's 10, but if someone wants to have a family member, one or two, add on to it, I think we need to make it easier to do.
Well, these, this is a good rural product right here.
Yeah.
There, I live in, I don't remember exactly how many total acres it is, but there's only about, I think there's only about 12 houses, but we're all, I think there's one that's actually about two lots, which are on 10, but the rest of them are all five-acre tracts, makes a very nice rural area to live in, so. All right, a pleasure of the board.
I do have a question.
Okay, question.
Is there a plan for multi-use or anything going up Bellamy? Because I know there is further south, so what is the plan for Bellamy?
So I don't know.
Yeah, but the, the Orange Belt Trail is having to deviate from the rail corridor, so I'm just not sure where it's going all around here, and people are going to want to be able to get there, so just what's going on here.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Nick, you're a county engineer. We're talking about Bellamy Brothers north of 52?
Yeah, I know Clark's project at Bellamy and 52 is putting their trail in to get under 75, right?
That's KD 52, that's on the west side of I-75.
Right, that's on west.
And then a lot of the Vision Road network connecting east to west has not, it's all future, it has not been constructed, but the projects, the residential projects along Bellamy Brothers are constructing their portion or dedicating right-of-way to us for construction of their portion of the Vision Roads network that's going to go east to west. If you're talking about sidewalks on the, on Bellamy Brothers Road itself, the developers are obligated to construct sidewalks along their frontage.
Right.
And then we, as part of the, as part of the safety project that we're doing to widen out the corridor with the paved shoulders and the edge treatments, we'll be installing connected, filling the gaps for the sidewalks all the way down to 52. And we did that because our land development code did not give us the authority to obligate those developers to build sidewalks outside of their frontage. So we're going to be coming along and making sure that there are connected pedestrian facilities to the State Route 52 corridor for all the residential communities that are happening on both east and west sides of the road.
Okay, so they are reserving right-of-way along the front of Bellamy?
Yes, they're conveying right-of-way consistent with our ultimate Vision Road network and the right-of-way footprint in our comp plan.
And there'll be some improvements on Bellamy coming, widening on both sides of Bellamy to strengthen the shoulders and widen the Bellamy Road to make it safer, too.
That's coming in 27. Yes, yeah, we are actively negotiating the design contract. The board already approved our shortlist and we're in negotiations with our number one consultant to get that design contract underway.
That was my only concern, that there was going to be some way that someone could get out of their subdivision and head somewhere safely, not in a car.
Indeed, I share your concern, and we are taking steps to ensure that that possibility will come to fruition.
It can be worse, but something, other than a car.
I would ask before you make a motion, if you can at least accept public comment, because this was a regular item.
Okay. All right, is anyone, anyone sign up for public comment?
No one signed up.
No one signed up? Anyone in the audience wish to speak to this item?
I didn't sign up.
Oh, you can, you can come speak. Doesn't matter that you signed up or not, you still will allow a chance to speak. Give us your name, address, and if you've been sworn.
Daniel Ratterman, 27131 Johnston Road, Dade City, 33523. Yes, I have been sworn.
Okay, thank you.
I appreciate the time. I own the 50 acres just east of the subject property. It's a dedicated wetlands low-lying area, and all of the water from not just the subject property, but the surrounding area west of Bellamy comes flooding into this area when it's, when it's raining. If you've driven through this area recently, you know that, that part of the property, probably about 10 acres is still flooded. They just removed the last of the stranded vehicle from Milton last week, so it is an area that's known for flooding, as I'm sure you all are aware. Bellamy Brothers was shut down for, you know, a handful of days post-Milton. I would send something in the mail, I think many of us were, about a proposed site plan of the 16 houses, but you'll notice that the, they're selling lots right up to Bellamy Brothers on the area across from my property. It seems to me that considering the grade issue, the westernmost part of the subject property is probably on a 2% grade, and if you start capping that with hard surfaces, houses, pool decks, driveways, sidewalks, you're not only increasing the velocity of water into that dedicated wetlands area, but also the volume of water. So it seems to me that the way that they've proposed this, there's no, you know, water containment provisions for this, and there needs to be, because we already know this is an area that's subject to flooding, and I think just, you know, anecdotally, I think there's an Austin Woods development that's just south of St. Joe's on Bellamy. I think they did a great job in how they set that development back off of Bellamy. They created berms, you know, for, partially for privacy, but partially for grade considerations. They have the stormwater waste ponds behind those berms, they did a wooden picket fence, and I think if we could propose something like that, I think, you know, from a practical standpoint, it's needed, but also from an aesthetic standpoint, I think it'd be greatly appreciated. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman and members. My name is Cindy Terrapani, I'm the authorized agent for this application. I didn't sign up to speak because I didn't know if there would be any concerns or comments, so I'll just take a few minutes if you don't mind. First of all-
Have you been sworn?
Yes, sir, I have been sworn. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First of all, with regard to the right-of-way, yes, it is, we are well aware that Bellamy Brothers is a Vision Road. We've already accommodated the new right-of-way, the additional right-of-way on the project as we are, you know, starting to move through more detailed design, although we're not far into that at this point, because we're waiting your, hopefully, your approval of this. The site plan that- The site plan that is, was referenced, can we turn on the Elmo?
Pretty.
So, just to orient you, on the right side of the screen, that's Bellamy Brothers, that's the road's frontage, and the site is about 92 acres total. We have drawn this site plan to reflect what 16 lots would look like, because as Commissioner White man's mentioned, 16 lots is the maximum number of lots you can do through the minor rural subdivision. As you'll note, there's only two lots that front on Bellamy Brothers. We did that specifically so that it would, you know, as people are driving by, it would retain the feel of a rural area. And their road that serves the project goes right through the middle of the site. Generally, that access road has already been designed and approved by the county, and we constructed it at this point. My client is well aware that he still needs to go through the minor rural subdivision process and do all the requirements that the county and SWIFTMUD would require, which would include, of course, any stormwater management process or design that would be needed. Mr. Ratterman, that lives directly across the street, he is correct, the front of his property is a wetland, and that wetland is pre-existing. It's there today, it's on his property, it is not on this site. But again, we're well aware, we have to go through the rezoning process, the site plan process, and meet all the construction standards of the county. And I would just remind you, also, in June of this year, this board unanimously approved the plan amendment that went from a 10-acre plan category to a five-acre plan category. This rezoning is now matching that exists exactly. We're going from a 10-acre zoning district to a five-acre zoning district. So, that's what we're requesting. There are two existing homes on the property today, so it's only 14 new lots. We could have done eight under the old plan category, so you see, it's a very de minimis improvement. And we're, we'll certainly follow all this, all the county's requirements for construction as we move forward, if you should grant this. Be happy to answer any questions.
Ms. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
How long going east to west of those back lots, about seven to 11?
The back lots, you know, I didn't bring the one that has all the dimensions on it. There've got to be, I'm guessing they're probably 600 feet at least, east to west. You're talking about the runs that are, ones that are running on the very back edge of the property?
On the backyard, right.
Yes, sir. I'm guessing 600, 700 feet, just from the proportions of the other lots.
So, hearing about the stormwater issues along the side, and I'm not familiar with the topographical aspects of the property, but what would it be if you would be able to take and maybe add 10 or 20 feet going off of those lots to now they're 590 or 580, move it back a little bit, make them a little bit shorter, and then create more storage up to the front, and get even landscated better?
Well, I think that that's a good idea, and I'm certainly not an engineer. I don't, don't know all the details of the topography of the site. So, I would defer that to when we go through the process with the county and let the applicant's engineer work that out with the county as the best way to do that. That, that may be the best solution, but I think it's appropriate for us to do that during the site plan review process.
Right, but the site plan is not going to come back to us, but I do want to make sure that it gets looked at and tried to get worked in.
These are five-acre lots, though, Commissioner, so you're going to have, you're not going to have stormwater ponds required in a minor rural subdivision.
These, these are good size lots here.
There are, there is a sway along each side of the entrance road driveway, running pretty much the whole length of that. Unless, again, that, that driveway that starts at Bellamy and runs through the property was designed and then approved by the county and actually constructed, so if we need to make a...
Does that driveway have a culvert underneath it?
I don't know the answer to that. I'm not an engineer, I'm sorry, Commissioner.
Do we require culverts, like, something like this?
I don't necessarily know.
I don't know.
They can impede normal, the, the historic flow, and so if that would require a culvert, they would have had to have installed one.
Yeah.
But if there's no swale system there, they wouldn't need a culvert.
If that, if that's already been through the regulations on, on that being approved by the county, that road, they would have told them then that it had to have a culvert or not, so...
Yes, sir, I believe so. I'm sorry, I can't answer that question.
Ms. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Can staff pull up on map pages to see if there's any existing flooding there?
Do I now?
Like a Pasco mapper?
Yeah, Pasco mapper, map pages, whatever.
Yeah, we can pull up Pasco mapper.
Yeah, this hasn't been flooded, I don't think.
Yes.
Can you bring that up?
Really, you just had it tumble over.
Actually, that's...
Are those wetland areas that where it says eight? Yeah.
That track's reserved flooding here, it's not...
Pretty close with the gentleman says.
Yeah.
Yep.
So, now, if you take the extra runoff from the roadway going all the way down, if it flows that way...
Right, gee, that, on the road there, that's flowed like that for many, many years.
Yeah.
Always been there. This doesn't necessarily change that.
Does the water ever get toppled over, does the roadway?
Oh, I think it sometimes, but it recedes fairly quickly, I think.
If we add more to that, I said, I'm just concerned if we add more to that, will it recede quickly?
North of it?
No, I said if we add more.
Well, why would we be, why would they be adding more?
It's on the opposite side of the land, but it's, you've had one, you've had a 200-year storm, and it's, it's basically where, where they're showing, so...
So, that shows on both sides of the road?
Yeah, that was from the El Nino of '03. We do actually have some areas that were shot.
That's interesting.
After the storm, I don't know if we've added those layers.
Can you throw the topo this, topo on?
Boy, 2024 is going to be interesting.
There'll be like one foot topo, please.
Well, if they could get another 10 feet across the pond, then that would be helpful. Showing on that map. Make the swale bigger. But I'm no engineer.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
You have, as the, as the applicant has pointed out to you, you've changed the comprehensive plan, that this is the only, this is really the only appropriate zoning classification that can go here. So, if...
I think the question just is if we put that restriction with the extra 10 feet on the...
It, you can't put a restriction on it, because this is straight zoning. So, this is eucalyptian zoning, so you can't condition it. You can express your concerns to the applicant.
I have a quick follow-up question. Did I understand that there does not...
Wait, have you already spoken?
Yes, these are, that, that was your only speaker for this.
Okay, I just, one clarification on something.
But you gotta give your name and all again, because you've left and then come back, so give me your name again.
Daniel Ratterman, 27131 Johnston Road, Dade City, Florida, 33523. I have been sworn in. My follow-up question is, did I understand it correctly, that there does not need to be any stormwater engineering considerations with a development of this size, then, with the density, I guess?
Agglutrozone? You don't require that agglutrozone, right?
You need to have somebody from your stormwater department answer the question.
Yeah, that's what was confusing to me. I just, I didn't know if I misunderstood that, or...
My comment was that, that a five, these were five-acre lots, so they traditionally would not require any addition, that, based on our code, they wouldn't require any additional stormwater pond, ponds. They're designed to absorb... You know, our large lot development doesn't require that addition, the same sort of stormwater ponding, but the planning staff should be answering these questions.
Yeah, okay, yeah. Because if not, we've got a big, we've got a big problem then with this stormwater.
No, I got a five-acre track, I don't have to put stormwater on mine.
I was going to let this play out, see where it went, that was interesting. Brad Tippin, Plain Development Economic Growth. Yes, you're correct, that this is a, you know, these five-acre lots typically are considered de minimis in these subdivisions that are minor rural subdivisions. There are some stormwater considerations that are taken into effect, mainly regarding the amount of impervious that is installed can trigger some of the SWIFTMUD requirements. So, we have to, we have to take all those different things into account. But at this particular phase, we do not have a plan in front of us. We don't have any way to look at anything to say that this is going to require something or not require something. This is a straight rezoning, and as the county attorney said, that there's no way to condition it to require extra things at this point.
Okay, so, thank you, Brad.
Ms. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
So, look at, look at the topo. From the back part of the lot, it's as high as 130, goes down to 125, 120, 115, 110, 105, 100. That roadway going all the way in is going straight in. Everything that gets runoff on that roadway all the way down is going to go back to that, down to that little spot. It's going to, it's going to make it worse.
On that land, it always has.
I know, but now we're going to make it worse by putting impervious...
No, it's not worse, because the road's been there.
They're not...
Is that a paved road now?
It's not changed, that's been a paved road.
That's a paved road?
We're not making it worse, we're just changing the size of the lots here.
And again, I'm happy with what I see, but it is a concern when I see the flooding right along the roadway.
I understand that that's on everybody's minds about flooding, and these kind of properties are not creating that. I mean, the world receives rain, and the top of rural areas, water moves to low areas of hills, and where they are, you have ponding on different properties all over the county, based on the fact that you have hills, and we're in a country where we have a lot of rolling hills. Not, a lot of people come to Florida, think it's flat, but it's not, it's not flat, not necessary.
Yeah. But my concern is this, we're building a road, we have a roadway, road that's there.
It's already there.
And I'm thinking, you know, when I, when I look places like at Oak Ridge, down by Trinity, that area's after all the flooding going to Trinity Oaks, but because of the channeling that they have, Oak Ridge doesn't flood. Never see them in the map, because they've got the channeling in there. So, Mr. County Attorney, is there a way we can ask, even though it's eucalyptian zoning, for staff to work with the applicant, to try to put in some type of channel in there to, to control some of that water?
You can always ask.
Okay.
I don't know whether you can require, but you can always ask.
I'm going to, I'm going to ask.
We need to, we need to act, so...
I need, I support your ask.
Pleasure of the board on this item.
So, we have an ask.
I'll move for approval.
Could I get my ask in first, please?
Oh, sorry. He asked for, he asked for something I gave.
So, we're delighted to see the...
I'll second that.
The five-acre sites, right?
Okay, thank you.
But I'm concerned, and I think your people might be as well, if we can prevent as much water going the roadway on big storm events to go in there, would you be willing to work with us to try to create some type of channelization, some type of holding of the water to store a little bit more in the long edge?
Well, my client, unfortunately, is not here, so I can't make a commitment one way or another. What I can say, knowing, knowing him, knowing the property owner, is that we will go through the county process for the minor rural subdivision, and if there's something that we can do on, that deals with the water on our site, we will certainly consider that. We cannot fix the problem that exists today. There is a lot of water that goes into Mr. Ratterman's property, that goes into his wetlands today. It has absolutely nothing to do with, with my client's property, or frankly, it's just a historic situation. So, we can't fix that. So, if you're asking us to fix the whole world's problem with Mr. Ratterman, no, I don't think we can do that. But if we can look at something that, that is a simple solution that would help with the water on our site, we would look at that.
I appreciate that, that's understood.
Thank you so much.
All right, I have a motion in a second. All those voters say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passed 5-0. Move back to regular items. R-54, I believe.
So, Mr. Chair, Assistant County Administrator Kathy Pearson is online and available to give the presentation for R-54, so promote her.
R-54.
Kathy, can you hear us? This is Mike. Kathy, you're on mute. Perfect, thank you.
Turn it up.
Thank you.
You're live and on.
Thank you for allowing me to do it virtually today. Kathy Pearson, Assistant County Administrator, Public Services. And we're here to bring round two of the opioid task force's allocation recommendations. So, next slide, please. We just wanted to show, next slide, there we go. Just wanted to thank the opioid task force, the public idea, all the great work that they've been doing, really all these applications. Next slide, please. So, for this second-year allocation, we received $5 million. We received 18.4 million total tax for year two. Just the breakdown at the bottom is where the funding comes from. We have the city-county funding, and then of about 374, and regional funding, about 4.6, for a total of $5 million, $7,500.35. To remind the board, a few minutes ago, we did carve out $750,000 on the 23-year project. So, the next slide, please. These are the allocations that the advisory board had recommended, and these are one-year allocations.
Kathy, this is, Kathy, this is Mike. Kathy?
Kathy?
Kathy, this is Mike. Can I get you to speak a little louder and more directly into your microphone? It's coming in a little quiet. We can still hear you, but it would be better if you did that.
I apologize. Is that a little better? Can you hear me now?
It's about the same. We'll, 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 we'll go through it. Go ahead.
I apologize for this, so let me just see if I can turn my volume up really quick. The screen looks before you now to the budget funding recommendation list. This is what the advisory board has recommended, and it is a single allocation only. So, as you will see, the amount that is requested and amount to fund is different. These are one-year allocations. Next slide, please. After we have briefed all of the commissioners, there was some revised recommendations that some of you have felt that maybe should have been funded, and I'll go through some of those now. There was the $850,000 for the, for the Sheriff's Department for his wellness center. There was $100,000 for the crew board, for their bathing, pilot program. There was $300,000 for premier, for their renovation of their Dade City office, and then $25,000 for ASO activities. So, with that said, what we did is we reduced Baeke's recommendation of $1,036, reallocated those funds, those other revised recommendations, as you can see. The revised recommendation is a little bit more than the $5,007, and how we are going to pay for that would be the next slide. How we're going to pay for that is... How we're gonna pay for that is capital contingency, oh, back, back one more. Sorry, back one more. So, how we're gonna make up the difference? We have capital contingency for year one of 271. We have remaining funds from approved broad-budget allocation of 55, that was the 750, we didn't use at all, we have 55 left. The recognized interest of the OTF funding of 286, for a total of $613,589. So, that is how we're going to make up the difference of a little bit more allocation than what we see. The next slide, I do want to remind the board, of the $5 million, 3.3 million was used for gen, savings to the general fund. These were projects that you had to fund through general funds, and with this opioid funding, we were able to save 3.34, or $421. I'm sorry for the stammer, I'm hearing the stammer too, but I don't know where that stammer's coming from, so apologize for that. With that said, we would like to make the recommended, recommendation for the board to approve the revised opioid treatment, and we have refined proposed project awareness that's recommended by the opioid task force with the revision. Delegate full authority to the county administrator to execute the project's specific agreement in substantially similar form, with review and approval from county attorney's office on behalf of the board of county commissioners. Additionally, delegate full authority to the county administrator to act on behalf of the BCC for any purpose besides in the approved subsidiary agreement. I'm sorry, I'm hearing that stammer too, and I really don't know what it is. Including but not limited to the authority to provide any necessary notices, to exercise the right to terminate the agreement, terminate the agreement, to extend the agreements for 12 months if necessary, and to execute any and all documents by the Department of Children and Families related to the project-specific agreements for the use of the opioid settlement funds. And my stammer's gone, thank you. Can I answer any questions for you?
That was really hard to understand and hear.
Well, I had a meeting with her, so I, I heard it all in my meeting. I hope everyone had a meeting.
Ms. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
So, so Kathy, I appreciate the meeting as well, and I appreciate you'll listen as far as what I, what I was thinking, as far as from the budget all the way through. This is a, this is settlement money, and I first didn't like the settlement where you had very little control over where it's gonna go, but when I look at where spending money for opioid treatment, I think the first allocation should be to offset our budget for our tax credits. So, I'm glad you've modified it to go to that. So, for that, I'm very pleased.
That's in it?
That's already in.
Okay. It was a little bit hard to stand, stand in tune with it because of connection that she had, so... All right, any other questions?
So, our fire, rescue, and the sheriff's office, JJ, can you come up here? Looking, I just, looking over this and just everything we've been through, do you, are you guys good with what you're getting?
Yes, this is a collaboration between the staff, Kathy and her team, Mike and his team, and we think it's fair. We're gonna be able to roll out impactful programs and support the sheriff and, and fire rescue with a true wellness facility, especially after what happened. And I should note, we should probably, I know we said some prayers for an employee earlier, there's still a sheriff deputy who's responding to the storm, who's still in the hospital.
I was wondering why.
I think it's...
I was just gonna ask Chase to come up too, so...
So, you know...
Is he still out of county? Is he still...
He's, he's still, still in the hospital, but I, I think he, I don't wanna speak for Chase.
He was not in the county. What, did he take him to Lakeland or something?
He was in...
Well, I, I don't know what hospital he's in, where I...
He's in Lakeland.
Lakeland General is where he was.
So, you know, our, our first responders were out there in the heat of the battle, and even during the storm, going around doing site evaluations, it's dangerous, because, you know, roadways wash out, things like that, and so I think a facility that's gonna be dedicated to, you know, so, they can get mentally stronger and then focus on their mental health, I think is good, but...
Yeah.
Chase Daniels, Under Sheriff, Community Outreach Operations with the Pasco Sheriff's Office. Apologize about the voice, I think I had what, what Commissioner Starkey had last week. But no, we, we appreciate the, the board's support on this, and as JJ noted, funding this project is a, is a big deal for our members, and fire rescue as well. We're excited to, to further strengthen our partnership with them, but we are very appreciative, so thank you very much.
With that, I move approval.
Second.
Chair.
We got a motion in a second and a discussion.
Yes, just going, going forward, so we've gone through two years of this, this funding cycle. I talked about this with Carvallo, and I mentioned to Kathy, I'm willing to go along with this as it stands today, but next year, I'd really like to narrow how we fund this. I think there's probably a lot of staff time, I mean, how many, how many people on there, firms on there are gonna have to audit, make sure they're in compliance with these, with the monies? So, I don't know if there's a way to, you know, fund, have two or three major, I'll call them prime contractors, and for this, to take this conversation, and they can pick, you know, whoever their subs are to do their work, or wrap around services, whatever the appropriate vernacular is for this type of thing. That might be better. I'm also, when looking at this, you know, I view my responsibility in this job of how do I maximize the taxpayer dollar? And to me, this year, this is a $5 million coupon. This is $5 million bucks, if the county used it internally, that we could save our taxpayers $5 million if we chose to restructure the way these funds are doled out. I appreciate what the nonprofits do. I, I, I think their, you know, their missions are fantastic, but it's also, at the same time, we're fiduciary to the taxpayer. And I view these monies that come in, that if we, we maximize it the right way, that we can save money for, you know, if we had $5 million bucks on this, for example, we could use it for something in the jail or what have you, and then that gives us $5 million free up for parks or whatever other needs we might need to be due. We just maximize the efficiency of the monies that we have, that we get from our taxpayers. So, just going forward, next year, that way staff understands how I'm gonna be viewing this, and, you know, we can only, you know, improve, this is the second year.
Yeah.
And, you know, just get the most we can out of it and, and try to save our taxpayers a few bucks. That's all. Thank you, Chair.
Mr. Pocock? Wait a minute, I got a question. So, Mike, would, would we, this is not recurring money, so to me, it's hard to, hard to save on taxpayer dollars when it's not re, we don't know the, how, we might get an extra, but we may not, I mean, it might just go away, and we not get that kind of money. Isn't that right?
That is correct.
Or is it gonna be recurring, and we can use it in place of taxpayer money?
It's recurring, but on a declining scale, so it seems. We don't, we target certain numbers that we think we're gonna get, but there, there is no, there is no guarantee of it, of course. I, I do agree with that. Kathy, is there anything to add to that?
So, you have a commission, that we will be receiving funding next 18 years. We're already in year two, so we'll have 16 more years of funding coming in, so it will be reduced every year.
So, it is recurring in the sense that, that I said, but the, the funding amounts vary somewhat on a downward decline in some sense.
Okay. All right.
Commissioner?
Yes.
I just wanna be sure that, you know, this money is for opioid treatment, prevention, and recovery, and that we don't stray too far from the purpose of what these lawsuits, what, what the settlement's supposed to do is help people who have these issues, so they're not expensive for us, so they're not going into our jail and not causing harm. I, I was online yesterday or this morning, and there's someone showing a video where this guy is breaking into their house, and the comment was, oh yeah, we see him all around. He lives in Moon Lake, and he's a, you know, he's got a meth problem, and, I mean, I wanna, I'd love to see us really work on not having that kind of community. And so, I, you know, I'm looking forward to that Bay Care discussion, see what they're doing. They're talking about the indigent care money, but I also want them to talk about, because they're getting a lot of our money, and I wanna see how it's used, how it's being used, and, you know, hopefully, we're gonna be keeping a lot of people out of the jail. That's my hope.
Okay, all right. I got a motion in a second.
One last comment, please.
One more, can?
And I'd just like to say, you know, I think we're all thinking the same way, we wanna try to maximize the dollars for our taxpayer, right? We all wanna do that. We also wanna fund everything that's opioid-related that makes sense, too. I would like to see Kathy in the future as well, working with JJ, to, to, to go in further to try to find what things we can get from the state for better matching monies, to stretch the toes further, as we keep on rolling. And that could be working with the nonprofits, too, wherever we can get a bigger chunk of the money, because there's still a third of the chunk that's up there in the state.
Okay. All right, I got a motion in a second. All those favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passed 5-0. We now go to R-55. And that's our last regular item.
I know it's been a long day. I think this is one of the last items. This item has to do with the $500,000 for the contract with Tampa Bay Psychology. That started as a fire rescue initiative. It grew to include our correction officers, and now also includes our 911 dispatchers. So, this allows them, Tampa Bay Psychology just focuses on providing mental health services for first responders, for first responders. They're throughout the region, and they have officers in Clearwater, Tampa Bay, they're looking at Pasco County, and this initiative would be to continue providing those services where, in our current EAP system, our employees get five visits for free. But under this program, they have unlimited visits for free, and they also are able to get a neck-up checkup every year, and we encourage that for our employees. So, I can answer any other questions, but...
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Is it include 911 operators as well?
Yes.
Sorry, that is...
No, I, I might have missed it.
I have new approval.
Second.
I got a motion in a second. All those favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passed 5-0.
Sorry, Raider's sleeping, so I should step him back.
All right, thank you. Okay, we go to old business.
Chair, we can get C-17.
Oh, the water, water body?
C-17.
Oh, excuse me. Yeah, C-17. David, come on forward.
Good afternoon again, Commissioners and Chair Oakley. I, David Allen, Utilities Director, I did get a chance to speak with Mr. Carden, General Manager of Tampa Bay Water, earlier this morning, and he will, he has agreed to have his, his staff come to the December 10th meeting and present an overview of their developmental alternatives project, which, the easement that was presented to you earlier this morning, to go over their developmental project, or development alternatives project, how this particular piece of property fits in with that larger picture, and then also highlight what they're looking to get in terms of their study. I also did mention the request to have a public informational workshop or something of that sort in advance of that meeting. They were already planning to do something like that, following the Board of County Commissioners' approval. However, I communicated that desire, and Mr. Carden's got a check with his staff on the viability of, of being able to do something before that next meeting. And then, so with that, it would be staff's recommendation to continue this item until the December 10th Board of County Commissioners' meeting.
Okay.
All right.
Second.
All right, got a motion, second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right, that's what opened up.
Did, so you said Chuck is coming on that?
No, no, Chuck, Chuck will not be available, but he will have someone from...
His staff.
But there'll be a Tampa Bay Water, there'll be an R, Tampa Bay Water.
Yes, yes.
Okay, because I just need to talk to you about it.
Yes, ma'am.
Because that's just, the, the item you're talking about is just a big part of a, a big picture for the future of water, so I think it's low on the list. We've got higher, I think, another reservoir, and I think more deep well, brackish water wells for D-South, and probably some others that are much more viable than, than that water out there, so, but that's my opinion, so...
Thank you.
That and $5 to get a cup of coffee at Starbucks, so... All right, old business. Mr. Whiteman.
Hey, Chair. I don't think we have any, I don't think we sent you pictures, but just wanted to, we had a groundbreaking, about 120 days or so ago, at the New Advent Health ER at 54 Meadow Point, very similar to the one that's at 54 and the veterans, and had a beam signing last week, and they're on their way to being open, hopefully, end of Q1 next year, so they're moving right along, and just congratulations to the Advent team for Zephyr Hills and Wesley Chapel. There seems to be a tug of war, who's gonna manage that site, but another piece of nice health, healthcare infrastructure coming our way, and just glad to be a part of it. Thank you.
Okay, starting with Veterans Day, I enjoyed the Veterans Lunch. I think a number of us were there at Newport Richie. It's always a wonderful event. Where do they get their veterans list, do you know?
The membership.
Huh?
The membership.
Yeah, their members go canvass.
Well, you're not a, you're not a member, and you got one, right?
Well, I was canvassed by a member years ago, so I think it just...
I just have a few that maybe I wanna ask, or consider.
Send them my way.
Yeah, okay. So, the members submit?
Yeah.
Is that how that works? Okay. I also spoke at the Country Place Veterans Event Sunday, so that was nice of them inviting me. I did not know I was the keynote speaker, so I know I let them down. I wasn't prepared for that. But you know, we're not like number 30 or 35 in the state for the number of veterans per capita. I did not realize that. I thought we were much higher. And when I looked up the stats, and these were as of 2022, it said we still had 1,222 or something like that, full war II veterans in Pasco County. So, that, that, that kinda surprised me.
You had two at the luncheon?
Yeah.
Two or three at the luncheon?
Yeah, and they were like pushing 100, I think, so, I don't know where they're all hiding, but that was interesting. But I need to appoint Kelly Hatman to the Tourist Development Council to fill the vacant seat from Wendy who left us, so I'd, I'd like to make that motion.
Move approval. Second.
All right, we got a motion in a second. All those favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passed 5-0.
Mr. Carvallo, I sent you a photo, because I didn't know who to send it to. I didn't, I couldn't tell who was sitting over there. Are you able to forward that? Do you have it?
I have it, I'm sorry.
Okay, so while he's moving that over, I wanna talk again about burying power lines. And there are many communities in the state that require, I'm not talking about the big ones, but require all the other ones to go under. Don't they do that, do they do that in Manatee? I know Miami-Dade did it.
The regulations are, in Manatee are virtually the same as here. They're all, all subdivision power needs to be underground.
What does that mean? Once you get into the subdivision?
Yeah.
But not in front of it?
So, transmission lines down, local transmission lines down the roadway corridors are above ground, but once you get into the subdivision, they're underground.
Right, because I'm trying to understand it. When I drive down Starkey, and I, I know a member, you do go down Starkey when you're going to and from work, and, and David, maybe you noticed this, the, the new Longleaf 400 Homes to the north, neighborhood 4, they've put all these power lines right in front of the neighborhood, where all the other parts of Longleaf, which our family developed, there's no power lines in front of the neighborhood. So, it looks so bad, and, but also, all these power lines go down, and people are without power. I know people in Gulf Harbors, there's people, you know, wanting to come together to put our, our power lines down. I know it's expensive to do it after the fact, but I wish we had strong... I know it's expensive to do it after the fact, but I wish we had stronger regulations requiring power lines to go underground. And we wouldn't be without, without power like, like we weren't.
No, you still would be.
No, not, not as much.
Well, they got there through the air going, like my, all mine was based on underground in my neighborhood, but they came there by above ground. All they have to get damaged is what cuts off my power.
Well, in Aristida, another one that my husband did, he did not put the power lines under. He could have, and maybe we didn't have those rules then, but we'll lose power because of a squirrel or something. I mean, it, yeah, we've got a lot of squirrels on our.
Just be careful with that, because if it's a cop or somebody, if you're going to throw something underground, they got to look at their rate structure, and it may force them to raise rates if they may not want to. That's, you know, that's.
You're going to pay a lot of money for underground all the way.
I just, I just see other communities going to it.
Not going to happen.
As a matter of fact, City Clearwater's looking at going underground. Okay, so I wanted to talk about these streetlights. These are the metro streetlights that are solar powered. I don't know how much these cost, but I wondered, and I think they have different versions of these. I think these are the big ones, and then they have a smaller one that goes on the side streets. But they don't require any electricity. I think they're just solar powered. I would, I was wondering if they're, if we shouldn't strategically put some of these at some of our school bus stops? Because I'm going by now, especially with the time change, I'm seeing kids in the total darkness at some of these bus stops. It seems to me this might be a good little project for, for some of our bus stops, because those are our responsibility, not the school district's. So just something to think about. Then, as I drive Trouble Creek often, I'm still in total darkness. I think there's two lights on light poles on Trouble Creek, and I think they actually belong to the subdivision to the south, and they're not literally on Trouble Creek. Trinity has no lights, Starkey Boulevard has no lights until you get to the bridge. What, what is our street road lighting program?
So it is part of our capital program. We do have lighting requirements. I'm pretty sure Trouble Creek is on that list. We can present the board with where it currently is. I mean, this, these are things that we, we fund through our, you know, additional funding sources, so we do set aside dollars. I think it's from, is it from the penny game? In terms of penny funds that are allocated towards roadway safety improvements, which would include lighting. So it's just a matter of prioritizing and getting them done.
So it isn't built in when we build a road, like when we ride an old Pasco won't have lights built into the cost of it?
I'm not sure. I think when we do them, we do with lighting, or do we not?
Well, we didn't put them on Trinity, and we didn't put them on Starkey.
Well, there's a lot of roads throughout east Pasco that I wish we had some of these kind of lighting, because it's awfully dark out in the.
Yeah, scary, especially the older you get.
Okay, go ahead, Nick.
If I may, Commissioner, County Engineer Nick Uren, this is a timely comment. We absolutely, I've already directed my staff to develop a policy on when and where we will prioritize the construction of new streetlights. We're looking at the solar powered option as well as powering them. Traditionally powered streetlights with underground electric, we can go one of two ways. We can construct the poles and buy power, construct and own the poles and buy power from the utility company, the power provider, or we can lease the poles and allow that utility provider to provide us both the electricity and the operation and maintenance, basically changing out the bulbs, making sure that they function properly. So we're looking at all three of those options, and we're also identifying, how do we score the corridors for installation, and how do we put forward projects for your consideration as part of our capital program? So Mike's absolutely right. We are, we're taking aggressive steps to nail this down, so that we are not being asked, when do you do it and where and why? You'll have that policy in your hand shortly.
All right, and that reminds me, I know WeLock did start Lake Blanche Drive, and I don't think the county has accepted it yet. But for a year now, Matt Call there has been telling me they're waiting on the streetlights for Lake Blanche Drive, that they were putting them in. So let's make sure we don't accept Lake Blanche Drive until the, the streetlights are in. Let's see, a question, as I rode around on my boat this weekend, and I saw the destroyed docks everywhere except mine. And I talked to one of the companies out there. What is the process for dock permits? I've not heard us talk about this at any of the meetings. And I know when I built my dock, if you remember Jeff, it was at that time when we weren't actually doing it right. And I just got a code enforcement permit, but now we require building construction permits and engineering. And so I'm assuming all those people are going to have to get in line to get re-engineered docks. So, and is it 50% damaged, or what, what's the rule on docks?
Yeah, the, the 49% rule does not apply to accessory structures and docks, so they would just get a regular repair permit or alterations permit for that dock.
So, yeah, but back then, they were not engineered, and they didn't have to have a permit. So what, what is, what is the process and how do we communicate it? I need you to be a little more specific.
Okay, I'll have to provide you, get you very specific details for, for docks that were pre-engineered. My assumption is you can still repair like for like, but I'll get you very detailed.
They'd be a non-conforming structure though, wouldn't they?
Yeah, I don't think that's correct.
And they fall under non-conformity rules.
I'll have to, I'll have to evaluate that, yeah. I have a great answer for you on that. But otherwise, docks would go back through the regular permitting process.
But, okay, my point is they didn't do that before. So the regular permitting process is engineered, an engineered dock permit? That's going to be interesting.
That's bureaucratic.
Yeah, but that's the law. I mean, we were break, we weren't doing it right before. Somehow it slipped through our Florida Building Code rules. So it's just going to be a surprise for some of these guys, I think. Okay, so we'll get that, we'll get that decided and get that message out. All right, lastly, my office is working on a farm share event. We need to have 30, 30 people signed up. I wanted, you know, I was hoping it would be the county commissioners and their staffs and start there, so please, you're going to get an email from Katie and Jenny, and we'll work on ours, because you know, everyone else does theirs, but they had approached me a number of years ago to do one from the commission office, and we didn't act upon it. So we'd like to get that going. All right, so look for an email from the, for the county commissioners.
Carvalho.
Especially this year, there's so much need.
With Commissioner Starky's lighting point? With Commissioner Starky's lighting point? Does the school district, obviously the school district determines their bus routes and where those bus stations are. So what kind of coordination between where the bus stops are and where there may or may not be lighting from the county? Is there any kind of communication between our two organizations for that specific?
Specifically to lighting, in my experience, no. That may have changed since I've been removed from the daily operations of that, but specifically, it was usually case by case. And private property owners would have to, just because of who's paying what to start on, on the light bill, if you will. So, and bus, bus stops change all the time. So, but.
Well, if it's a solar power, the solar power thing might work.
Well, that's, that's, that's why I made a mental note of Commissioner Starky's idea, in which case then there's capital cost, and then we'll see. Although I'm not sure they're completely sold, but we'll, we'll certainly look into that.
I have one more thing, and I asked, had asked Keith Wiley to be on. Kathy, you were at the meeting that we, so we had Kathy, Keith and I, and David Goldstein had a meeting, meeting last week, or this week, whenever it was, on the joint use agreement between the K-8 at Starkey and the Cultural Center. And we did get some resolution. They've been locking the place, the parking lot too early. Now they're going to lock it later, right, David? That's the email that we got. And also, you know, wanting to be sure that we're able to access that meeting room, because sometimes it's kind of tough for us. And also, we're looking at using the gym a little more, because we have, we really haven't programmed the gym that is a shared gym. So that was, that was a good meeting. But while we were there, they brought up the, that parents are dropping their kids off in the park, and then they're walking through to get to the school. Well, we started finally going really under construction on the multi-use fields there, and all of a sudden I have all these parents contacting me, because we've stopped, we've blocked off the roads to the back part of the park. And I get it, because there's construction trucks going in there to work back there. David, you remember this came up at the meeting? I told the parents, I don't believe that it was ever intended, that they were supposed to drop their kids off in the park and have them walk to the school that way. Apparently, the school driveline is only, you, you have to have permission to be in the drop-off line at the school, which is just new to me. And so some of those people are afraid to, for whatever reason, to have their kids walk or ride their bike to school, so they're all using the park. They wanted me to see about opening up those gates, but then we'd have construction traffic and pedestrian users, so I said I'd bring it up here. I don't see Keith on here. I called him yesterday. I'm assuming that's why they blocked those gates. Keith? No?
We'll have to bring something back.
Okay, we need to.
Yeah, okay. We'll work on that one. I brought it up.
Lou Jager.
Okay, I'll make it super quick. We attended a Angelina Country Day School. I was a ribbon cutting, and we had a really cool experience and rode in a hot air balloon. Something.
Wow.
Yes, and Commissioner Oakley was a little skeptical, but he did it, so.
I did go in it.
Very proud of you. And that's all for District Court.
Didn't fall out or anything?
And I missed the balloon ride, because I suspect 52, a truck tipped over and blocked three lanes of traffic, so it took me an hour and a half to go six miles.
Oh, goodness.
I was down and around.
I'd be good to see you at the, from the balloon ride.
They only let us go 50, 50 feet anyway, so you're okay.
And I got some pictures here from the Seven Springs Rotary Club, Veterans, Annual Veterans Dinner. I was very lucky, there's two World War Veterans that were there. The guy on the right, his name's Fritz. Fritz is 99 years old. February he turns 100, and will be a, a great, great guy. His brother, next picture?
I'll see some table next to me, that was great.
That was his brother.
Do you have more pictures? There we go, okay, there's, so there they are with the plaques that they got, which give to all, all the veterans the first time through. And there's Charlie and his wife that come out to see us. And so the gentleman on the far right, that's Frank, he's 97 years old. His birthday was that day. So we had the thrill of everyone, just saying happy birthday to him, it was pretty cool. And just wanted to give a shout out as well for the Rotary 6950 Disaster Relief Team, the district goes out helping around.
Was that Own Veterans Day?
No, it was Wednesday, Wednesday last week.
Oh, okay.
Day after the election.
It was a great event.
Yeah.
So Disaster Relief Team, see a picture coming up. There's Chris Casella, the Steric Pontons right there, a planning commission member. Myself and a gentleman, Dan from Idaho, I believe. He just comes in to try to help with, this lady had her house flooded. It sat for a while, she was kind of like not sure what to do, et cetera. And I said, you got to get it cleaned up. So they cleaned, cleaned it up with, one day with some volunteers, and then these guys showed up yesterday, did a phenomenal job, took out the drywall to great extent, so now she's on her, on her way back to her house. Do I go for pictures? Okay, there's a picture of all of that. Okay, so in front of you, I asked these, what kind of a letter from the commissioners. Senator Scott is up for, looking for Majority Leader, Senate Majority Leader right now. And the group from Tarrant County Republican Party put a letter out rejecting John Cornyn as a senator.
Say that again?
They, the Republic, Tarrant County Republican Party out of Texas rejected John Cornyn as a possible Majority Leader. Suggested Senator Scott as, as one of the possibility.
So his home people didn't want him?
His own people didn't want him, so I, I.
Is that where JD's from, from NACO? Our incoming president?
I think he is.
I think he is.
So anyway, with that said, I then texted Senator Scott, I says, would you like a letter of support from us? And he said he would. So I drew, I just asked Sonny to kind of write up a really positive letter, no negative, just straight positive letter, with the opening line saying, Pasco Board of County Commissioners strongly supports this election of Senator Rick Scott of Florida for the Senate Majority Leader. So if everybody likes this letter, we can send it up, have the chairman sign it, and just put our show of support.
We should be the swaying reason why.
We could be the difference maker, so.
I'm not sure.
If the board's comfortable with this, I'll make a motion that we send this letter, Mr. Oakley, sign the letter, and we'll send it forward to the appropriate people.
Second.
Got a motion, second. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 And last thing.
I have a pass.
Thank you. Last thing, the 49% rule, FEMA causing a lot of grief, I'm sure you're starting to feel it now, it's going to get stronger and stronger. People at Senate Manor have gone out where they've had two different people go out and get appraisers to come into appraise property, to see how the values come out, to see if they can make it over the 49%. I think it's going to be a positive thing. Signal Cove is another area where they're going to be in a similar situation, they may do the same. Sea Ranch, I think, is in better shape, Sea Pines as well, and I think Westport too. But I'd like to have us be able to set up something with our staff to be able, and down to the south as well. I'm just talking about those directors in my area. But I think we need to put a presence out there to put people at ease, because as a Realtor sent you an email today, she's worried about so many people that don't want to deal with this, and don't want to, they just want to go work and get, get stuff done, but they'll get a new permit.
They're going to get caught.
I know they're going to get caught, and I'll let JP talk about how they're going to get caught, it'll be helpful for the people to hear. But I think it's important that we try to make every bit of information we can out there, get a presence out there with these people, so they can relax. Literally at Senate Manor, they called the meeting within 24 hours, and the whole room was full, and 100 people were on the waiting line. A Zoom call.
Jack, and I did, I forgot to mention this, and I apologize, because it was magnificent. JP and a lot of the billing department put on, we put on a meeting at Gulf Harbors last week? I don't know, it's all, Thursday, so almost together, standing room only. And, and they did a phenomenal job in answering all the questions, giving out information, educating them on why we have the 49% rule, and not like 30%, like Pinellas County. And I just want to tell you, you, you guys did a great job, but.
Thank you.
And I want to thank you all for coming.
Yeah, and I want to say JP is doing a phenomenal job.
Yeah.
I mean, I, I've seen him.
A plus.
With people fired up.
Yeah, so calm.
And that man stays as cool as a cucumber, explaining it out and letting people know, look, we're trying to work with you. We have rules we're going to follow, we'll work with you, but we've got to follow the rules.
Yeah.
So what you're doing out there is JP, that's why I got so much confidence, you get in front of the people and your team, they did a great job at Sea Ranch all that time as well, and I hear great things out in Gulf Harbor, so I get confidence, you know, I'm not trying to put you on the spot, but I think these people could use your help and your guidance, just to kind of like, show them how to go through the process. And again, if, and if you would highlight as well, what would happen, what could happen if they go through, don't get a permit deliberately, and then what they could be faced with.
Yeah, so what we'll talk about.
Could you please state your name for the clerk?
Yes, JP Murphy, in our own Assistant County Administrator Development Services. So Commissioner Mariano, your, your question is, what happens if they don't get a permit, essentially? And understand that for all of the affected areas, we've done our own individual assessment. Everyone's going to get a letter whether there's substantially damaged or not substantially damaged. We also have some information sharing that works with FEMA, and we've got debris photos, we have a lot of, we have, we have a lot of data points that point to us to, when it comes time, like in 90, 180 days, we start reviewing where certain properties are at in their process, and we find that we have no permits for certain properties, and there was three foot of water on this side, three foot of water on that side, yet here's this structure. We're going to assume that that structure was automatically damaged and would be going through a compliance process. There'll be a door knock, and we're going to have to go through that, through a process[1743.71] that probably looks a lot like after the fact permitting. And only then it's going to be a much bigger headache because fees won't be waived then, there'll be double the fee, there'll be after the fact, some of the stuff has to get torn out, and some of those folks may find themselves on the wrong side of the forty-nine percent rule. And I'd hate to see them throw good money after bad for not getting a permit. That's one of the reasons we incentivized waiving permit fees. Yes, there's some time, some, some increased permitting times because of the inspections and the evaluations that were required, and, and we're working diligently on that. We've doubled, doubled the size of our staff, um, through contract meetings to be able to help these folks. But we want to handle all those problems that could be really bad in the future now. Um, so again, waiving the permit fees, come see us. Um, of course, we have now the four, three locations countywide plus the two remote sites. We are going to try to find a way to get some folks out into individual neighborhoods. Um, once letters start going out and then we can work with them. Unfortunately, I just don't have the, the size of staff to be in every neighborhood. We'd love to be able to do that, but, um, uh, we're also looking at working with our Facilities Department to create just a substantial damage center where folks could, could come in and get detailed, uh, analysis and work through their permitting, uh, stuff. I've heard great things about people who have gone out to the Gulf Harbor site and were able to work with our flood folks and actually fill out their application together. Um, but in, in, in some instances, we're seeing values too low, property damages being valued too low, and there's some delay going back and forth. So absolutely getting that hands-on touch to, to get it right the first time, so we don't have a lot of back and forth is, is what we're striving to do right now. A- as well as trying to put more folks on the phones, to call folks back to get information, to shrink that permitting time.
And, and I, and I think, like, especially with the Senate Manor folks, these folks are all, in that meeting, the vice president went and got an appraisal, another person went and got another appraisal, and they're looking at the appraisal, see how they can work out and going through it. If, if it works with, let's say, one, then the rest of them can probably do the same type of thing and go forward. I just, I just think that if, if your onsite exists for them, pretty much uniform as far as condition to properties, et cetera, um, it might save you guys a lot of time by being out there and just eliminating right from the get-go and take away some of the doubt that others may have, and one explanation may take care of the whole room instead of doing that explanation.
Yeah, and we, we still plan on doing that. When the letters go out, Kathy Pearson and I are going to go out into the neighborhoods, uh, conduct a session not only with the local leaders, the HOA, um, the Civic Board that may be out there, but also some of the religious leaders, because we're getting a lot of feedback from those folks as well, trying to get some information. So we'll host those sessions, absolutely. Understand, we still have to look at every parcel, uh, you know, take a parcel-by-parcel look, and, and my key message for the board and for anyone who's asking for help is detail, detail, detail. Whatever details you can provide, receipts, pictures, quotes, estimates, adjustments, the, the more detail you give us, actually, the quicker the review time is because there's less doubt in our mind that says, okay, we have to fill in this blank, that we don't, we don't understand your pricing or your value. So detail, detail, detail is, is absolutely key.
I'd just like to say, you know, um, it's been great working with you through this thing, through these hurricanes, I mean, our whole team's been phenomenal. You know, this week, they're still picking up a lot of sticks. Kevin Pliska, John Batista, the, the whole team is doing a great job as well. And that's all I have for my committee report, but do you want to make one comment? Unless anyone wants to make any comments for them.
Well, do you want to, you want to tell how many people are working, uh, from Title Basin? And how many permits you're doing a day, inspections you're doing a day, it's amazing.
Yeah, so for, for the Title Basin substantial damage evaluations, we have over sixty additional inspectors going out and doing evaluations. We're doing about a thousand a day. Uh, on the west side of nineteen, we had over twelve to thirteen thousand effective structures. We should be done with that work in probably the next two, three days at that rate. Um, if somebody comes in and applies for a permit and they need a substantial damage evaluation, an evaluator will go out there. And in some cases, we've gone out two or three times, once we got some information back and said, okay, uh, their information said this, we'll send an evaluator. Yet we confirm that. Um, so some folks have had a couple different ones. We expect those letters for substantial damage to go out sometime this week as well, but, um, that's just on the evaluation side. We've also brought in additional permit techs, plans examiners, and we've, we've got a mission request in for some more flood review folks. Because that's where the, the joke point is now, is now that all the packages are coming in, it's taking us about ten to fifteen minutes per package, there it is.
I need your help, I'm almost done. Wait until one more number.
And we only got six or seven qualified professionals to do that, so they're, they're turning through those things as fast as possible. Well, thank you very much, appreciate it.
Um, let's see, I had another question for, no, I have another question for you. How are you, uh, I'm just thinking there was a gentleman on my street who just went through remodeling. I tried to go to his house online to see if he had, when his permits were pulled, but I, I don't know how to do that. Do you do that on the property appraiser? Because I was just curious, on the property appraiser site?
The most accurate data is going to be on the Acela site.
Okay, well, I have no idea how to do that, don't want to do that. But are you guys correlating permits that were pulled within the last calendar year and your forty-nine percent? Because they're going to get caught up. And that's, and that's the law. And we can't waive the law after the fact. And I'm really concerned that Pete, these people may not know that. So what have you done to?
Yeah, you're, you're, you're spot on there, Commissioner. So the forty-nine percent is cumulative, whether it's substantial damage or substantial improvement. You can have a combination of both, that puts you over the forty-nine percent. Um, that timeframe runs from the issuance of a permit a year ago through the current day. And I won't get into the details if you forgot to close that permit. If you forgot to close that permit, just close it so we can go back to that original date. Um, but that is, is something that we've, we've been messaging since the beginning. In fact, if you look at our rebuilding, uh, in a flood zone flyer, that's one of the asterisks at, at the bottom that says if you had recent improvement, it may affect this number. Um, and we're reviewing those just when we get the package, we're reviewing those individually as they come in. But unfortunately, that's correct, that, that is.
What if they didn't pull permit for anything?
Well, then I don't have anything to, to prove that off of, unfortunately, unless they, somebody provides some other information.
Well, if it's someone that was, where there was three to six feet of water, they just recently remodeled and they didn't pull permits to refix their house, you're gonna...
We'll, we'll still go through the, if they didn't pull permits for the repair or did they didn't per, pull permits for the original alteration?
For the repair.
Yeah, certainly for the repair, we'll, they'll have to go through that process. Understand that because we have an evaluation of every parcel, and if we have reason to believe that that property was damaged and we don't see improve, you know, permits for any improvements, we're going to assume the worst-case scenario and then go back out and take some enforcement action on that property.
I actually saw, um, yesterday, a, a, a house at Gulf Harbor's already knocked down. It's already demoed, it went fast.
Yeah, we've got a growing list of folks who do want to demo their properties so that they can prepare for elevation.
Yeah, so, um, my last one, let me think what it was on, oh, let me think. So on the permitting, um, shoot, I can't remember what it was. I'll have to come back to it, okay? But it was on JP, so don't go far.
I'll be here.
It was on this whole process, well.
Are you through, Jack?
I just, one more comment.
Yeah, hey, it's, it's a big deal.
I wasn't sure whose turn it was.
Let me tell you.
Okay, Jack. So I'll say, JP, thank you very much.
Thank you.
No, but I have one more for him that I hope comes back to me.
All right, Jack.
Just calling back.
At least in the Mississippi either, but I, I just want to say, running this campaign was long, um, and we just worked so hard, all of us, to, to keep just doing what we have to do for the citizens. But, uh, I want to say wherever I was, I was saying, this is the best foot I've worked with, I'm proud, I'm happy we all got re-elected, I'm proud to serve with all of you.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah. That's good, is that it?
I, I had one more thing that includes Mike.
Whoa, wait a minute.
And I, I forgot that the county staff also wants to be in our administration and wants to be in on our farm share. So this is a, this is a, a joint effort, and I, do we even have a date, do you know, Joanna?
We do not, we're working on it.
Okay, so, um, I'm looking forward to it.
We talked about early in the year.
Yeah.
When I originally contacted you.
And we'll, we'll get our own going, okay.
Mr. Cavall?
Thank you, sir. I appreciate the moment of silence there for, for Matt Sizemore, he's a Labor Supervisor Three in our Public Works Department, uh, on the concrete crew, he was here for twenty-two years. Um, sadly missed, a dedicated, um, you know, family member and leader on our team, so he will be missed, but thank you for the moment of silence. Um, I have some good news, um, that we received a grant, uh, so our efforts are paying off, a five-point-three million dollars.
Hello?
USCDC for, um, um, unsignalized crosswalks, so safety improvements for unsignalized crosswalks in the county.
Wow.
So yes, so we.
Great job.
Thank you.
How many of those do we have?
Uh, we need more, but we're, wow, I'm sure we have a lot.
How many is that going to fund?
Unsignalized crosswalks, so five-point-three million at least.
Well, how, how many is that going to fund, let me put it that way?
Sure.
And what's the priorization?
I can give you my sour county engineer answer there.
After you one more time, county engineer, Nick Uren. Around eighty-five is what we asked for, and, and that's what we received funding for. So we have a number in, in Pasco County, we were looking at higher-speed roadways and trying to provide visibility for pedestrians at crossing locations. So we're excited to see this come to fruition.
So while you're up there, um, I understand that the road paving list has been published. I have not seen it. Um, and along with that then comes the stormwater improvements on those roads.
I can tell you where one of the roads are.
That wouldn't be Nick.
Huh?
That wouldn't be Nick.
That's not Nick.
Yeah, well, the road, storm.
Nick's an engineer, he's not in the road business.
Yeah, I guess, I guess not. Well, I'd like to know where to find it.
I'm throwing you a lifeline, take it.
He's skipping away.
Well, I'm, I'm sure Branford can produce that for us, I'll, I'll have to take a look.
Yeah, like, can it be emailed to me?
Yes, ma'am.
Please, thanks. I've, I've getting complaints from Sunray.
From everybody.
You haven't started paving?
Yeah.
Well, I can tell you, uh, County Road Forty-One is looking real good because it's being paved right now, so.
Fifty-fourth getting paved by D O T.
They're actually almost finished with it.
Uh, the last thing I have is, we did have a request for mosquito control to allow Department of Agriculture to come in and do spraying in San Antonio area for adult mosquitoes. Again, uh, I think this is, this is a great way to take advantage of state resources to help us combat potential vector of control and things like that. So if I could just get a motion out to Chair.
Why just there?
I've just, okay, well, I've got a motion, I need a second.
Second.
And a second to, uh, send the letter back out.
Send that letter out, yes.
For the mosquito, and I've already, I've just given him the letters.
Only if it's expanded.
Well, they have been doing.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye. Past five of them.
Question, you got the letter right there, your hand.
You got a question over there.
Okay, clerk.
Can we please say exactly what the motion was, because everybody was popping up out with everything.
Sure, I, I believe the motion was to authorize the Chair to sign a letter to the Department of Agriculture requesting, um, adult, adulticide treatment in the east San Antonio area for mosquitoes. They're doing the work.
Hmm. Mr. Braylon?
I believe so.
That wasn't the letter you signed. What, is that the right letter or not?
Yes.
So, I don't know why they need permission, just get in here.
That's the same letter I signed before. I have two letters I gave them.
Okay.
One of them was for, Jack was asking for, for Rick Scott, and then I had one for mosquito. I think that's the same letter I had before.
We added just a little bit of language to the, to the first letter to create this one.
Okay. You think you have another one, Jeff?
I have just the description of the letter.
Are they still spraying out in Moon Lake?
So, here's my, here's my, the one that I just reviewed that the Chair signed said, please accept this letter of support for operation of low-flying aircraft and application of mosquito pesticide application.
That's fair.
Response activity over Pasco County. It does not limit it to San Antonio. That's, that's why I'm questioning the description.
Even better.
So is that for, I mean, is that the right letter? That's the letter I had one time before.
I think, I think this letter would probably serve as a generic letter. The, the request from the Operations Director of Mosquito Control, um, was specifically out in the east area, and FDAX, which is Department of Agriculture's requesting treatment request. So as, uh, County Attorney aptly points out, it's to support operation of low-flying aircraft to apply the adulticide countywide, in this particular case, according to this letter, which would include San Antonio East. So I think this is kind of a, kind of covers.
Kind of covers her.
Future requests.
Which I think.
So that's what we needed. That's what the Chair was just authorized to sign.
Yes, that's what I was just authorized to.
Do you want to repeat that now, Mr. Secretary?
No, I think that's, we just need to tell who made the motion and who seconded it.
Oh, I don't know.
Do what?
Who made the motion, who seconded it for that discussion?
Uh, I think Commissioner Starkey seconded it, I didn't catch who's, who made it.
Did you make the foot, motion?
Uh, for the record, I'll make the second.
I'll make the motion.
Okay.
Thank you.
There we go, Starkey made the motion, Waitman seconded it, and then we all, I vote, yeah, we all voted aye, and it passed five-zero, okay?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, that's all.
As clear as it needs. Mr. Stausner?
Following up on, uh, Mr. Murphy's conversation with Commissioner Mariano, I just want, because we haven't really talked about this, which is important in my opinion. Um, I went through, not a, not a storm event, but I went through an enforcement action while I was with Manatee County, um, where FEMA came in and said that a very high-end waterfront community in the county, um, gated community, um, had enclosed their lower levels. They were, they were built up and they enclosed their lower, lower levels. Um, the county was threatened to lose its flood insurance. It was, uh, put on probation, um, they did, it was not a fun time. Um, so the other end of this coin is, if we don't take the step, and they held the county accountable for unpurmitted work, it wasn't like, mm-hmm, okay, the building department had permitted all this stuff underneath. So I realize FEMA changes over the years, they may get kinder and gentler, I doubt it. Um, but what your building department, what the Assistant County Administrator is saying that they have to do, on the legal side of this, they have to do. Because we'll, we'll end up, we're in a fight with FEMA trying to protect the rest of the residents of Pasco County, um, to maintain their flood insurance. And so I thought that was important.
That's all I have.
Yeah, we can't mess around with that. Tarpon Springs, lost theirs.
Mountain Park, do you have anything?
We have nothing.
Okay, sounds good. I did have a couple of things. I was happy to go out to Pasco Hope, as you see here. We all got to visit there and see those, those homes being put in and all. I did get a few calls on this project that people didn't want homeless coming in these homes. But in fact, homeless, whether you lost your home to the flooding or lost your home some other way, is still homeless. So but I think they forget the fact of people coming into these places really are coming in there to get help. And we're going to give them that help and give them a step up in, in their lives where they'll move on out of these, out of these homes like this. So one way or the other, I think it's a good, good project and good for the county. The other thing was, we went, we had a, the police, the city down here had this decorating of these jacklanners, I guess, all these pumpkins and all. Chief of Police was very upset. He actually didn't receive much recognition for their painted pumpkin, but, you know, they were part of it. Whether they got a vote or not, they didn't. But it was all good, all for fun. So good, good things happening in the community around here. And then the other thing was, we were at Angeline, and I actually spoke there and I got to speak besides riding this air balloon, which I really didn't really want to go on that thing. But that made me nervous. I don't know how you, you don't really, you don't guide these things. They get up and they let them go. Well, they had them tied by three ropes, but it didn't go anywhere. But yeah, it was, but I did meet a resident while I was there, and, and she enjoys Angeline. Angeline, she said, every property or every house looks out on a preserve, which I thought was, I think it's 5,500 acres if I'm not mistaken. But that's pretty remarkable for every home to be looking out on a preserve. So that's a pretty nice community when you think of it in those terms. So but it's good for the school coming there and the kids. They'll educate in the future for the, you know, to be good citizens here in Pasco. I think it's all great stuff when they broke ground for the new school they're going to have there. So the only other thing I have is, I did get to speak to the Doctors of Business Administration at St. Leo University Friday a week ago. And it was pretty interesting. When I first went in, it was kind of strange, and I don't, somebody here might know the movie or whatever. But when I first went in, everybody I met was doctor, doctor, doctor. Just kidding. I remember a movie somewhere that this guy, he met all these doctors. So it was pretty amazing. But they had gotten their business, Doctor of Business Administration at St. Leo University, and they had asked me to go speak. I'm not a doctor. So but it was very enjoyable being there and seeing how they enjoyed, you know, working for their degrees and the efforts and all the, some of them didn't, didn't make it right away, but they kept trying. Might have took them, instead of two, three, or three years, it took them five or six. But the fact of they still finished and they got to be called a doctor at the end of it. So very interesting. So but with that, the only thing I can think of that moves anything better is the fact that our country is, I think, headed in the right direction, and which means also our county's heading in the right direction also. We got a lot of things we need to be concerned about and try to do to help our citizens. And I think we'll all be aware of what we need to do at the right time to do it in the future. So with Mike, you and your team, guidance for all our staff and all that help us out, we'll do our jobs to help, helping leading that and giving you all the support you need to get, you know, make the right decisions for our citizens. So I think we'll all be much better off for all of it in the future. So with that, we adjourn.
Pasco County waterways and wildlife depend on you to keep them healthy. Excess fertilizer, grass clippings, trash, oils, and pet waste wash into gutters and storm drains when it rains. Stormwater carries these pollutants directly into our lakes and rivers, creating an unhealthy environment for-